So we're going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino.
Here.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Persak.
Here.
Mayor Potem Pimentel.
Here.
And Mayor Boyle.
Here. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to start with the invocation led by our illustrious city clerk, Mrs. Weaver. Then we'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Potem Pimentel. If you could all please rise.
Dear Lord, as we assemble here this evening, grant us the gift of understanding that we may be kind and willing to work together. Grant us the gift of love and peace that we may walk together in harmony. Grant us the gift of laughter that we may smile and see the happy side of life. We ask your guidance during the meeting so that our knowledge may result in growth and prosperity to our city. Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the color from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, but liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, first up is the 60th Annual Holiday Parade, which one of my colleagues is going to read the proclamation for.
That's me. I have the honor of doing this. Proclamation of the City of El Segundo, whereas the El Segundo Chamber of Commerce has given El Segundo the annual holiday parade for the past 60 years. A tradition which it both celebrates El Segundo and calls forth the holiday season. And whereas the parade to be held on Sunday, December 8th, 2024, from 1:00 to 3:00, with the theme of Candy Cane Lane on Main will assemble on the corner of Imperial Avenue and Main Street and continue down Main Street, disbanding in El Segundo Boulevard. And whereas the parade will start with the grand marshals, the Automobile Driving Museum honoring them for their many years of contributions to El Segundo, end with the traditional grand finale, the Chevron fire truck, bringing Santa Claus throughout downtown El Segundo and in between the crowds, and will be treated to a few surprises. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim Sunday, December 8th, 2024, as the 60th Annual El Segundo Holiday Parade, and invite the community to all the traditional El Segundo holiday events, and wish the Chamber of Commerce many, many more years of marching down Main Street. And we have Marcia Hansen, the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, to come accept this proclamation.
Marcia.
Good evening, Mayor Boyle, members of the City Council. On behalf of the El Segundo Chamber and all of our members, we want to thank the city for their longtime partnership with this holiday parade. 60 years, can you believe it? It's one of the wonderful things that makes El Segundo a special place. This year, we're going to give a shout out to all of our wonderful families on Acacia Boulevard with our theme Candy Cane Lane on Main. They worked so hard on that event. We want to thank them and just kind of honoring them with that theme. We're also honoring the Automobile Driving Museum, and I know, I hear you, Automobile Driving Museum, as our grand marshals this year. They provided cars for this parade for years and years and years, for our homecoming parades, for so many events they've supported, so we want to honor them as our grand marshals. So we really thank the city for the partnership, all of our sponsors. We have horses and cars and people with blue hair, right? That'll be Drew. Lots of marching bands and more, and we hear Santa's coming this way. Santa's coming, he's coming to see you. Yeah, coming this way, and it's going to be a wonderful day, so we hope the community comes out this Sunday, December 8th, 1:00 on Main Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcia. All right, next up, we have the Candy Cane Lane proclamation, which will be read by Councilmember Baldino.
My pleasure. All right, whereas, great and wonderful events are many times the inspiration of one person, like Ken Bailey, whose simple idea that a decorated tree to be placed at the end of a cul-de-sac on the 1200 block of East Acacia Avenue in celebration of a neighborhood Christmas in 1949, is 75 years later, an annual holiday tradition in El Segundo, worthy of national media coverage and known as Candy Cane Lane. And whereas Candy Cane Lane features Santa Claus arriving on top of a horn-blowing El Segundo fire engine to light the beautifully decorated homes on Candy Cane Lane, as he makes his way into a sleigh in a Christmas village situated at the end of the cul-de-sac, from which he sends good cheer each year to thousands of boys and girls, residents and tourists. And whereas homes, yards and trees are brightly decorated, while property owners dress up their homes for all the oohs and ahs and the tradition of Candy Cane Lane. A few good merry men of Candy Cane Lane have given their merry ho-ho-hos year after year in the Santa suit donated by Chevron. A big thanks to spring cleaners for generously making sure Santa suit is sparkling for the season. The El Segundo Police Department, the volunteer El Segundo program, and El Segundo Recreation Parks and Library Department, who make sure the crowds maneuver down the lane in a safe and orderly fashion. And whereas, least we forget, we herein list the names of the folks that are synonymous with Candy Cane Lane. Ayers, Coens, Stocks, Edsons and Slaya, McEwen, Lees, Moores, Turnballs, McCullas, Delambright, Goodian, Laughlin and Bear, Mitchells, Gans, Hutspas, Hearts, Decakis, Bronkats, Phillips, Stowzer and Stezo, Rogers, Kells, Wong, Schlindner, Winowski, Armocost and Hogs. I did it! Now therefore, on this third day of December 2023, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, proclaim the 1200 block of East Acacia Avenue as Candy Cane Lane from December 14th, 2024 at 7:00 PM through December 23rd, 2024, and invite the young and the young at heart to experience the wonders of this El Segundo holiday tradition. And we have here Ms. Jennifer Turnbull to accept this on behalf of Candy Cane Lane.
Hello. Hi, Mayor and City Council. I am Jennifer Turnbull. Awesome job on the names. A few tweaks, but it's okay.
I'm working on it.
I wanted to thank you guys so much for the support this year, the extra support, as last year we had several complaints or suggestions, and we've met multiple times this year, and between all the department heads, Linnea Palmer, Sean Green, you guys have all listened and have tweaked things, so I thank you tremendously. I thank you for the shuttle service. I hope as I was speaking with Linnea tonight, it may be a great thing this year, but I think it'll even be better next year when more and more people hear about it. So thank you again for your support. We look forward to seeing you all, and you know where I live. You are all welcome. You are welcome. So enjoy Candy Cane Lane and thanks again. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. I got a question. How many years have you two been doing that, Candy Cane Lane?
Um, since 97.
Wow, that's amazing. Are there any times you're just like, do we really have to, you have to do it, basically, here on the blocks, right?
So I'd kind of like to be a resident and know what it's like to leave the town the month of December, but you know what? I wouldn't change it.
Well, I know it's a lot of work. Your house always looks amazing. Congrats. Kudos to all of you on your block, man. It's amazing.
Traffic has started. People are already coming, so we're excited. Yeah, so last week, it was, our street was a little crazy.
Well, thanks again. We'll do a photo real quick.
Thank you.
You want somebody to come up? You want somebody to come up? Come on, Cap. All right, here we go. A couple of those, yeah. Thank you so much. Okay, next up is the Community Christmas Dinner, which will be read by Councilmember Drew.
Tough one to follow, Ryan. Whereas, the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner was conceived by El Segundo resident Bill Kaufman in 1983. Bill solicited the help of local businesses, residents and organizations to fund, cook and serve a traditional Christmas dinner that brought people together to share the holiday spirit. And whereas, the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner has become a hometown tradition that has served the community for over 40 years. And whereas, the annual Christmas dinner will be provided this season, sponsored by the El Segundo Rotary Club, along with the time and effort of many individual volunteers, along with the support of the Recreation, Parks and Library Department's Outreach Office. And whereas, the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner will be held at 12:00 PM on December 24th at the Jocelyn Center for the benefit of all those in the community who wish to participate in fellowship and share in some Christmas cheer. Now therefore, on the third day of December 2024, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, do hereby commend and thank all sponsors, supporters and volunteers for their unselfish community service in keeping this hometown holiday tradition alive in El Segundo. And accepting will be Ryan Delgado.
Good evening, Council, and thank you. I want to say a big thanks to Rotary for all the assistance in donating the meal to our residents and guests, and also to National Charity League, who will be down there serving. It's going to be a wonderful day down at Jocelyn, and we have room for plenty, so it's not just our seniors, it's any families in town in need. Give us a call at Jocelyn, we'll put you on the RSVP. And for anyone that's home and unable to attend, we do home deliveries that day as well, so we will do our best to get you a nice turkey meal.
And if anyone has children or students looking for volunteer hours, volunteering at that dinner is a great treat, and it's the residents really appreciate it, you know, just sitting down, talking to them, and it's a really great opportunity to get to know the seniors in our town, and it's a great way to give back to the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Persak. All right, now is the time, and, oh, I'm sorry, we have one more item. We have the LA2, actually. LADWP Scattergood Hydrogen Ready Project Update. And this is Miller Zarniki?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Sassoon. I'm sorry. Okay.
This one. Okay.
We have our environmental committee chair and school board member, president right now?
Clerk, whatever. Doesn't matter in this room.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, you don't want to go to the first slide, the intro slide? Let's go there. Okay. All right, so good evening, honorable mayor, members of the City Council, everyone in the chamber and at home watching. As stated, my name is Tracy Miller Zarniki. I serve as the Chair of the Environmental Committee, and tonight I am also here alongside committee members Dennis Falk and Shannon O'Toole. And our Vice Chair Kevin Butler is watching from afar. While we here in El Segundo spend a lot of time talking about Hyperion, we want to ask for some attention on the LADWP cousin down the road, Scattergood at this time, since that's also our westward neighbor that affects our residents' businesses and environment in general. And it's about to go under modernization that may affect us in a different way. So to everyone watching, please know first of all that Scattergood does not service El Segundo. We have no jurisdiction over it. It just happens to be our neighbor that has impacts upon us. So, we invited the LADWP folks to share a version of their plans with City Council this evening within the original comment period for the DEIR, but their staff wasn't available to be here, and we appreciate that they hosted a virtual public meeting on November 20th that was actually advertised in the Herald, but we assume not a lot of people saw that busy time of year, all that one time doing that's not enough, so we are here to draw attention for you and the community in general to the feedback timeframe that we're in. That being said, recently, the DEI comment period was extended to January 29th, and we will keep that invitation open for LADWP to perhaps come back and present, if they can, within that window, to maybe address some of the questions we're going to share with you tonight that we have posed to them multiple times and still hope to hear some answers to. So with regard to that, we had our first meeting with them a year and a half ago, April 7th, 2023. And I should, let me set the framework just to give you an idea. This modernization is part of LA's greater plan for renewable energy. They want to implement a carbon-free energy system and a reliable electrical power grid, and part of that is establishing the continued availability of local energy generation as needed to rapidly dispatch in heightened times of need. So what that means for Scattergood is they want to upgrade units 1 and 2, which are conventional natural gas-fired steam boiler generators, being replaced with rapid-response combined cycle generation systems, which is capable of operating a fuel mix of natural gas and up to 30% hydrogen. So, a year and a half ago, they came, spoke with us. What you see here are some of the questions that we posed to them in our nearly two-hour discussion within our committee meeting. And while the committee respects and supports the efforts of the Save LA for pursuing greener energy processes and products, we have some concerns over things like hydrogen production or hydrogen resourcing in general. Because at the time, a year and a half ago, they could not tell us, are they producing the hydrogen site? Are you trucking it in? Are you piping it in? What are you doing? Because all of that affects us in different ways. And in fact, the DEIR states that "effects with regard to potential hydrogen-related hazards during operation were identified in the initial study as potentially significant." As it stands today, hydrogen infrastructure has yet to be determined for this project and will be analyzed in a separate environmental review and approval process, but it's really hard for us not to have questions about that vital part of this project, even at this time. So, as you'll see, those questions were all related to hydrogen in that timeframe and still apply now. I will say that other things that we talked about were the overall construction and operational processes in both short and long-term impacts. The DEIR shows the construction is estimated to be three years of work down there, just in case you're wondering how long. And, you know, who knows it would actually be done in such a period of time. The other thing that you'll see on here is operational that we've asked about, and specifically emissions monitoring. As you know, that's a big concern for us here, for multiple reasons. We had our second meeting with them just last month, briefing us on where they're at now. And I will say that the earlier questions you saw all still remain intact and unanswered. We, again, find it mind-boggling that they don't know how they're going to get the hydrogen they need to run this plant, but that's a whole other issue. With that, again, what it says here is, as I mentioned earlier, we asked them to come and present to you directly, so you could hear it direct from the source, but they could not. Some of the questions that we added to our concerns are, you know, if this isn't an air-cooled, if it's now going to be air-cooled, doesn't need ocean water to cool it, does this have to happen at Scattergood? It's an aging facility. Can we not find a better, more appropriate place to do this? Some of the, I would say really, the most important thing we talked about was AQMD-related. We reiterated the importance of having them involved each step of the way, since we know how important emissions monitoring is. We want it to be all-encompassing, uncompromised and transparent. I encourage you to actually look at the air quality part of the DEI itself, because it is extensive. You'll see that there are certain air quality concerns that involve significant and unavoidable impacts even after mitigation. And I've got page numbers and all to tell you, but maybe read through this yourself, and I can circle back to this in the future. But, you know, there's an actual question that says, would the project conflict with or obstruct implementation of the applicable air quality plan? And the conclusion of that question is, "The proposed project's exceedance of specific regulatory thresholds would result in a conflict with or construct obstruct implementation of the 2022 AQMP, and impacts would be significant." So, uh, what I also want to mention that we just kind of came up with in the room was, uh, what about community benefits? Again, we are a neighbor, we experience the impacts, but we get nothing out of this. So thoughts that came up in the room, or what you see there, is an opportunity for there to be funding or onsite, uh, EV charging that happens there, hydrogen-powered, if you're a hydrogen plant. Those cars will possibly be becoming more and more prevalent. Or just an EV station, we can use that. Um, can there be blue butterfly land up there? Um, and again, like, the idea of building a dome over our city with air purification is not something that can obviously happen. So these are just nice things to have that, uh, would be, would be helpful. Um, here is where the public can find the, uh, opportunity to read the draft environmental impact report. Uh, the QR code should lead you to that. Um, as it says here, when we created this presentation, the comment period was through December 20th. It is now, again, January 29th. And hopefully, we can send this out from the city to announce this to all of our, our local, uh, businesses and residents. And again, we truly want to believe that this plant, utilized as a backup for energy source to the LADWP, will serve the greater good. But obviously, we have concerns based on our history with its cousin down the road, as well as LADWP's sometimes disreputable history in places like Owens Valley. Or maybe you read the Sun Valley settlement that just happened, um, like, two weeks ago for, I think it was sixty million dollars, after claims that over twelve hundred people were sickened from exposure to a gas leak. And that perhaps LADWP failed to perform adequate equipment inspections and did not notify residents of its emissions. So you can see why we have some concerns about this. So we are here to update you and the community and to implore you to spend some official city time and energy looking at the DEIR and paying attention to this moving forward, because it's not going to go away, and we have to live with it. So, in short, that is what we're here to share with you. And hopefully, engender further conversation and attention. So.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller Zarniki. Any comments from the colleagues or questions?
On the slide, you said that your questions or comments had been sent in. Did we send an official letter from the city raising these questions?
We did, through Elias. Go ahead, you, you want to explain the, what our process was?
Uh, so, yes, uh, we did send the letters, uh, the letter consisting of all the comments you see. And, uh, we copied the Madam Chair and the City Manager. And I'll be glad to forward that copy to the members of the City Council if, if they so desire to see a copy. Uh, one thing, uh, you, you went over that, but let me reiterate. We, we are specifically asking if they could consider a fence line monitoring system now that they're going through this. It would be good for Scattergood to plan for design and implementation, construction of a fence monitoring system. And that's one of the comments that, that we made.
And, and again, we have not offered any official comments on the DEIR. It's two hundred and six pages, I've read it one and a half times so far, but again, I'm not the best person to comment on that. I'm sure there are city officials that could give a more engineering-type of read-through and commentary that, you know, our legal department would be comfortable with and all of that. So, really just here to shine a spotlight on this now and say, please, pay attention and, and engage on this.
It does seem kind of odd that they won't have the final, um, draft done in the spring, when they haven't answered some very s- significant questions. Um, and, uh, now, we, we have just hired that new person, um, the environmental person. I think it would be wise for, let, let's put a lot of focus on that at the beginning, so that we're at the table from the very beginning, making sure that we don't get behind on the, and now, would the communications come through the County Health as well, the way, I mean, how does that communication flow if there is an issue? Is it going to follow the same procedures as, as Hyperion? And we just need to understand those, like, where all those little pieces, are they going to copy those policies? Or how is it going to, do we have to loop in the, um, the County Health Department?
Those are excellent questions. Um, it's hard to say, we, LA Public Health is not part of this DEIR at this time. But I assume there are some policies that require their input.
Right. And I'm sure AQMD would be involved in this process as well.
Could we loop in Holly Mitchell's office quickly on this too? Because I know that, you know, she helped us with the communications at the Hyperion. And if we can get ahead of this and loop her in to make sure that the LA County Health Department's part of this... Because, I mean, it starts at day one construction, right? It's not once it's up and running, but day one construction.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure that, again, some of these policies, they have to look at, but we can definitely nudge folks along. I mean, I, I would love that everybody that we've called into the Hyperion issue is aware of this from the get-go, just because. And it's in their jurisdiction, as it were, you know? Senators, Assembly Members, EPA, all these folks.
Well, considering Senator Ben Allen's office is here in town, you know.
I, I would just add that this would be a nice thing to stay ahead of. I mean, this is a, lists out at eight hundred million dollars before they've even thought about digging, so you factor that it's probably a two-billion-dollar project. If they say it's three years, let's figure it's six. Uh, and that's an enormous piece of infrastructure. To my knowledge, the only planned, pure-green solar hydrogen plant in the galaxy is in Namibia, which is the most sparsely populated country on Earth. Uh, that's a vastly different kind of construction than what we're talking about here. The fact that it made it through the LA City Council unanimously speaks to some, must be some odd politics involved in the construction of, of who this benefits, uh, and what the different bargaining units might be that, that benefit. So if, if we can liaise with, you know, District 13 and District 11 and see what the, the score is on this, or if it's even likely to happen, or if it's just some way to keep people employed, uh, that would be probably worthwhile.
Yeah, and, and let me just add that they have touted their, the relationship they have with the plant in Utah as, oh, well, it's working over here, so it'll be fine over here. So, um, just add that to your list of...
We also test chemical weapons in the middle of Utah where that plant is, that burns all that nitrous oxide that comes out, so.
Anyway, I, that's all.
Are, are we convinced that, to Mayor Protem's point, I mean, they've been deliberating on this for eight years, back when Marty Adams was CEO. They were looking at battery storage, they were looking at upgrading. And the shame is that they just rebuilt those two units less than ten years ago. So they spent, I don't even know what the number was, call it a half a billion dollars of ratepayer dollars to rebuild Units 1 and 2 with better technology, fossil fuel, burning tech, and now they're going to replace the whole thing with hydrogen. Just seems unnecessary and so disruptive to life for all of us, which leads to my next question, which is the significant unmitigated, uh, impact. Is that during construction only, or operational as well?
During commissioning as well, and, and with one vendor in particular, which may, or may not be the chosen vendor, uh, during operations. So again, the air quality section of this is, um, meaty to read.
And do we know, is it funded solely by DWP? Are they getting funds from state or feds as well?
I believe, uh, I believe they are getting federal funds.
It's a federal arches program, right?
That's correct. In fact, the very reason, in my humble opinion, they have this proposed system is because they want to take advantage of that federal funds that became available to them. And I would like to make one point...
Hold on a second, those funds could also be changed potentially with the new administration, right? They're, they're not set in stone, per se, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense of how likely this is and what timeline, because it's going to be really disruptive. And the neighbors along that bluff are already getting hammered between Hyperion and Scattergood on a daily, so.
One, one point I would like to make, uh, when we went over, uh, how they plan to get liquid hydrogen to, to the facility, it's, they do not dispute the fact that that is an issue. What they, what they're saying and, and their, and their stand on that issue is, you know, they are not in that business of delivery for, for, uh, for liquid hydrogen, and we think otherwise. We think that if they plan to, uh, to design something which is going to be based on delivering, or somebody needs to be able to deliver that liquid hydrogen, that, that, that needs to be part of the process. And you just cannot simply wash your hands off and say, we are not in that business. Just want to make sure I clarify this.
And, and, and again, they, they do tell us that this is a when-needed plant, but eh, the intent is to be needed by LAX and Hyperion. And it's, um, I guess, expanded wastewater processing that they anticipate doing there. So, that's what it's here for.
Well, thank you for being on it, so earnestly, appreciate it. Thanks for taking time. Alright, next up, we have the El Segundo Fire Department Rock and Run. I think we have Engineer Gurney to present.
Hello, how we doing? Good evening, Mayor Boils, members of council. Appreciate, uh, you taking the time tonight with us. Um, my name is Jeff Gurney, I'm the President of the El Segundo Firefighters. I have the honor of representing, uh, an amazing organization here that put on the Rock and Run. We have a quick one-minute video to show you, and then I'll finish up with a, a quick, uh, speech. And then, thank you there from there. Go ahead and start it. Alright, thank you for that. Um, as you can see, that was a pretty powerful community event. Um, that was Saturday, November 2nd, uh, where your El Segundo firefighters alongside Rock and Brews hosted the first-ever Rock and Run 5K. Uh, we had nearly two hundred runners, a hundred volunteers. And it not only benefited local El Segundo businesses, but positively engaged the community, brought together local organizations, and raised money for El Segundo charities and El Segundo's very own Armstrong family. Uh, we'd like to thank many of our local partners and sponsors that made this a special and successful event. Um, also, a special thank you to Sean Green, uh, from Parks and Rec, Lieutenant Corey McEnroe from ESPD, Dino Marsoci from Financial Division, and Garrett Acquaintance from Street Division. And without their support, this event would not have been possible. Building an event like this takes vision, it takes dedication, confidence, and most of all, persistence to break through a lot of difficult barriers. It takes months of planning involving many stakeholders and decision-makers. It's no easy feat. And it often comes weathering criticism and doubt. So I want to give a big thank you and acclamation to Khalid Abdul Shiffi. Where are you? There he is. Big round of applause. Our very own firefighter, paramedic, and, uh, homegrown El Segundo native for tirelessly working over the past six months to make this event a reality and producing a fun, new, truly El Segundo event meant to give back to the community. We were able to raise just under eight thousand dollars to be donated. And tonight, we have three checks to deliver. First is a fifteen-hundred-dollar check to the El Segundo Ed Foundation. It's a wonderful organization that expands students' educational opportunities and fosters a sense of community by investing in our children's education. Uh, I'd like to present this to you, Carol. I know you're the President of, of this organization, and we want to thank you, uh, for your service. Our second, another check we have for fifteen-hundred dollars to Case. Case is a, a longtime El Segundo nonprofit established to help prevent homelessness by providing necessities like groceries and basic home goods to families when they need them the most. I'd like to present this check tonight to the two Case volunteers here tonight. Thank you for showing up, appreciate it. And finally, we have a third check for five thousand dollars that we humbly donate to a local El Segundo family, the Armstrongs. This family has endured the most difficult of times as their newborn son Liam battled through life-threatening medical complications, survived nine days on life support and three months on a ventilator. The heavy financial burden of medical expenses has not distracted the love and strength of this family, which represents the miraculous recovery that Liam is making and why he is home today to enjoy the holidays surrounded by his loved ones. This is a simple but powerful expression of community. Thank you to all those who participated and donated their time to a good cause. Thank you to all the volunteers who spent their Saturday making it a remarkable community event. Thank you to the city for working with us through the hoops and hurdles of coordinating such a complicated event. And finally, thank you to our fire chief, George Avery, for supporting us and the community in such a positive manner. He is proving to be a great leader and role model. Thank you for your time tonight, appreciate it.
Is there anywhere I can get the firefighters to go in the back row? And the police officer? Oh, guys, just in the, just in the back, to where, where the council members sit.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, gosh. Is there anywhere I can see that beautiful shirt, that party party little tiny shirt? Thank you so much. Alright. Alright. Here we go, guys, think I can get everybody? And a couple of photos here, and, one, two, and, and one more. Thank you so much. Alright, now is the time and place for public communications. Madam Clerk, how many do we have this evening?
Two.
Two. Okay, fifteen minutes each? Just kidding. We're going to limit it to, um, five minutes each, please. We'll call the first one, please.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Chris Edom, former City Council candidate, 2024. Uh, tonight is an exciting milestone for our community as the final designs for the teen center and skate park will be presented by our Parks and Recreation staff. I've been dedicated to the skate park's redevelopment since late 2016, with the first designs presented to the City Council in early 2017. From the very beginning, I've been deeply invested in creating a space that our community can be proud of. Over the past seven years, I've collaborated with Spawn Ranch and renowned skate park designer Jim Callens on countless designs to make the most of the existing footprint. One of my key goals was to infuse elements of El Segundo's iconic landmarks into the skate park. I'm proud to share that you'll see creative nods to the city's infamous water tower and beach smokestacks seamlessly incorporated into the design. The skate park will be a game-changer for our city. With a range of features for beginners, intermediate, and advanced skaters and scooters, this park truly has something for everyone. We also made sure to listen to our community. After hosting numerous meetings with the youth of El Segundo, we incorporated their input into the design. The result, a skate park that not only meets their vision, but maximizes every inch of its space. It's a tribute to the surf and skate culture born here right in Southern California. And it will stand as a symbol of pride for our children and future generations. I would like to take a moment to thank everyone who helped bring this project to life, Ally Mancini, and the Parks and Recreation team for their unwavering support, Aaron from Spawn Ranch, Jenny with MIG, and our El Segundo City Council, and of course, Jim Callens for sticking with me through this journey. As I stand here tonight, I am proud to give my full endorsement of the final skate park design you'll see. This is a skate park that embodies the heart of El Segundo, a space where a community... This is a skate park that embodies the heart of El Segundo, a space where a community can gather, create, and thrive. That's my speech.
Thank you, Mr. Edom. Appreciate it.
All right, Cheryl Smith.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Cheryl Smith, and I am the Council PTA President. This is Tara. She is the Run for Education Chair for the El Segundo Council PTA. As I look upon the dais, I feel like I'm basically preaching to the choir. You know we have an amazing event, the El Segundo Council PTA Run for Education. This event represents a true collaboration within our community. We are so grateful for your continued partnership for this and support for this event. This event has taken place every single year for the last 30 years. This spring event focuses on bringing our community together and showing off all that El Segundo has to offer. We have a 5K, a 10K, and these routes go by every single school in our district. And then to keep the fun going, we also have a half K and a 1K for our littlest runners. We also have an expo to encourage people to stay and enjoy El Segundo's hometown, hometown charm. The expo offers race participants, spectators, families, friends, and visitors the opportunity to meet a wide range of local professionals and vendors, as well as government and commercial service providers from the El Segundo community and surrounding area. The run not only brings in money to support education in our community, but it also puts money back into our local businesses, our local economy. El Segundo Council PTA uses only local vendors for our printing, our T-shirts, our medals, advertising in the Herald, even our coffee and bagels are provided locally. Give a shout out to Blue Butterfly. We also have a program called Show Your Shirt and Save. With this, we actually drive money back to the local businesses. Because after the run, people go and they patron these uh, various restaurants and, and establishments. So then that way they can get a discount and hang out in El Segundo. This past year, over 1,800 people registered for the Run for Education. Forty-one percent of the race day participants were non-residents. So not only are we bringing the community together, but we are also attracting people from our surrounding communities. They all come to San, to El Segundo, and they all patron our businesses. As a 501(c)(3), the El Segundo Council PTA asks the community to come together to donate their time to make this event happen. We work very hard to minimize our costs, and we do this so we can give more back to our students. With the budget cuts this year to education, our PTAs play an even bigger role in supporting education in our district. The council run money supports all four schools. It supports $6,000 in scholarships for arena and high school seniors. It supports various programs like screenagers and health and wellness programs for students. It supports the arts, like reflections. It supports the Young Entrepreneur Fair. We also have given special gifts to our schools, like the bookworm machine that's dispenses books for people who have, for students who have gotten awards. It provided a portable speaker for the high school ASB, color guard flags, which you'll actually see in the holiday parade, water bottle filling stations at Center Street. Richmond got new student seating for um, their blacktop and garden area. The high school, we give money back to the student clubs on campus. We bought sturdy tables and umbrellas. We also supported the robotics club, the award-winning robotics club. Unfortunately, though, this year, our cities, our fees from the city have doubled. And so we're here to ask if you could please waive the fees or reduce them somehow. The increase in expenses takes away money that we are directly giving back to the students of El Segundo. Nearly 20% of our expenses were for city fees. So as one professional volunteer, as two professional volunteers, to the five of you, because I know you're all professional volunteers as well, what as volunteers can we do to work together to give more back to the children of El Segundo? Thank you for considering our request as you look to do fees and discuss all that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, thank you for comments. Appreciate it, Ms. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Headsec. All right, we are moving on. That concludes public communic- uh, communications. Mr. George, did you want to touch on anything? I just know it's been a protocol for you to, you know, speak out for public.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, looking forward to the skate park. I thank you for all your uh, work and, and I know looking forward to the presentation later on in the meeting. You know, as far as the fees associated with the Run for Education, um, you know, I'll have to sit down with the, we have an in-house committee, if you will, from each department that assesses fees, whether it's public works-related, uh, police department-related, rec park-related. So I'll have to get a sense of exactly what we're talking about in terms of fees and what's being asked for of the applicant, and then I can respond more properly at that time.
All right, anything on Hyperion you want to cover that later?
Oh, sure. Yes, I might as well do that. Now, very short report, Mayor. But, but a good report. Uh, in terms of we, we, we had a very successful kickoff meeting on the 20th with um, Dr. Stenstrom, who, who as you know is our, our consultant, our expert consultant, as well as now his uh, his person that's working with him, Philip Fries, along with the Hyperion staff, including uh, the, the general manager Barbara Romero, uh, the, the chief engineer and a couple other folks from Hyperion. Very productive meeting. We met for about two hours in the conference room here to really kick off the efforts now where we and our team, particularly Mr. Fries, will be, will be going into the facility. I know they've set up four particular direct meetings of four hours each where he will go in and really get a feel for what's going on. They look at the equipment. If you, if you recall, this gentleman ran the wastewater plant for LA County. So obviously, we'll be looking to his experience and expertise to, to give us, as well as Hyperion. I actually think the Hyperion staff was pleased to, to see him and, and get feedback from him. Uh, and those meetings will be kicked, I, I think they're scheduled to meet, uh, December 12th is the first, the first meeting. And he will continue to visit the site on a weekly basis to, again, assess the uh, you know, how the, the equipment's working, where, where there may be some faults, where there may be opportunities to, to run things more uh, productively, if you will, and really looking at it from where the odor generating uh, issues are coming from. And I know he's also going to look at potential other areas, other than H2S, which as you know has been the major uh, the, the gas emanating odors. Um, so looking forward to that. Uh, AQMD, there was also an AQMD board, uh, hearing board meeting on November 19th. Uh, I know that um, uh, the mayor attended that meeting. We were, we had our staff, our environmental manager on, on, on Zoom for that meeting also. And um, the good news from that is the board, after a lengthy discussion, uh, did vote unanimously to extend the abatement order until August 4th of 2025, with this, keeping the same conditions in place. So that, that was the, the good result of that meeting. Uh, over the past two weeks, AQMD did receive approximately 32 odor complaints. And the, their inspectors did respond to all the complaints, but no notices of violation were issued. And then finally, on the 21st of November, Hyperion performed a planned exercise of the one-mile outfall gate, which they do pretty regularly. That is all my report uh, on Hyperion for, for this meeting.
Can we just write a letter to AQMD to clarify? There was some testimony when I was there about how um, they are closing the doors now. But when we were there, all of us were there touring that plant, it was clear that they cannot open the doors because they need to keep the doors open to spread the waste because they don't have a spreading apparatus in those loading bays. Unless that's been fixed, which is one of the things we asked for as a uh, condition of the order of payment, then they have not resolved. That'd be good to clarify that because that was misrepresented by the uh, person under oath for LA City.
Will do. We'll send the letter off.
And I don't, do they have an air knife in front of those doors? If you go to the LA County facility, it is, I mean, a, a sheet of air. So anytime they open those doors, all that smell is pushed directly back inside the doors. I mean, that is a, that's a $100 fix.
I think that was one of our recommendations for an additional requirement that AQMD did not adopt, correct?
Right, yes.
So I, I'm concerned, having watched this last hearing and seen the previous hearings, that AQMD is no longer interested in maintaining this abatement order. The, not the last meeting, but the meeting before that, one of the board members asked, where is Inspector Haynes? We have questions, and we know Inspector Haynes has answers. He didn't show up to the next meeting. He's been removed from Hyperion. He is the one individual who has boots-on-the-ground knowledge that if he could sit with our consultant, would be able to just leapfrog all that knowledge. Um, and then the other concerning moment in that hearing is when AQMD's own attorney advocated that there could not be a finding of ongoing nuisance and was basically trying to convince the board that they should not extend. The board did it anyway, thankfully. The, the board heard enough to be concerned. But I, I agree with, with Drew, that the testimony that's being provided by Hyperion does not reflect the reality, the limited reality that I myself know of what's going on out there. And I'm, I'm hoping I can get consensus from council to set a meeting with AQMD and ask these questions with them so that we can have an understanding of what is their intent with continuing to ensure that our air is safe. Because I am disheartened by what I saw at that last hearing. And so I don't know what your views are, but I, I think this is something where we need to sit down with someone at AQMD.
You're saying staff, right? Not, not the employees?
Staff, yeah. I don't, it doesn't need to be political, but...
The good news is that, I know you know this because you're tuning in too, is that all five of the board members unanimously overturned, not overturned, disagreed with the council's recommendation. That was a, the good thing. In fact, so much so that the past chair argued to make good cause as to why it should, you know, still be in place. So that, that was good. I agree. I think if any pressure we can exert on AQMD, I would absolutely support.
Yes, we uh, have been reaching out uh, to their staff. And I, I do believe we're going to have a meeting shortly with, we're trying to get the right people to meet with. So we are, we are reaching out. We are making a little headway on setting that meeting up.
That'd be great. Thank you.
We also have the um, Juan, Jose Solachi Linwood, Mayor, who just got elected to State Assembly. He is currently still, I believe, the AQMD rep. And I had reached out to him once, and he put a staff person. He would be a good person to point to because he's whole, his job is to represent us in the district. So maybe start there.
I'll fall up with you on that.
Okay, I think everyone's in agreement with Councilor Baldino on that one. Okay. All right, uh, let's see. Now we're going to go to consent. Any polls? Oh, Mayor Protem. Oh, no, I don't have any polls.
Actually, I, I have one, probably for the first time in my history. Uh, I think it's, oh.
Ah, yes, I skipped an item. Now's the time to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Thank you. Okay. You were saying, Councilor Drew?
Uh, yeah, approve, uh, I actually want to pull uh, item 11.
Okay. And I'm going to pull item 15. All right, do we have a motion to approve items five through 15 with, I'm sorry, yeah, five through 15 with the exception of 11 and 15?
Per six have moved.
Great. Second?
Mattel's second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pleasure. Okay, Councilor Drew?
All right, so item 11 is to continue the emergency action for the permanent repair of the city of El Segundo Wiseburn Aquatic Center pool heaters. I actually have no issue with what you've written in here. Okay? Actually, my, the reason why I'm pulling this is that, I don't know if this is the time or the place, but it's going to be now. Um, I believe that we need to set something on the future agenda to address the deal we have in place with Wiseburn. We got $40,000. Wha- whatever deal we have in place is not even remotely covering the problems we have with this pool. So they, I think it's like a $40,000 a year equipment replacement fee, and we spend $40,000 a year on chlorine. So this needs to be addressed, and I would like to take this time to set as soon as possible um, something to be put on the agenda to discuss how we go about renegotiating this.
Okay.
And with that, I will move approval.
Can, can I add through in one quick piece? Uh, and I promise I'm not pulling item nine, but because there is Measure W money involved, and there's $600,000 of unprogrammed funding in there, and Measure W is written about as broadly as any ballot measure could be, is there any chance we can put any of that Measure W money for clean water toward the pool? Because if we are not using more water in the pool, we're using clean water elsewhere. I mean, look, we're using this to build a bike path. Just my, just my two cents. I'm not, just, just think about it. Just think about it. Just think about it.
Okay.
All right, so I'll move approval of uh, item 11.
I'll second. All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, five zero. Okay. Item 15 was the, is the agreement between El Segundo Police Department and Flock Safety to provide drone hardware and software. I don't have any objections. I, I love this program. I was just hoping you could give a quick overview for public about what we're doing here because it's significant departure from what we've been doing in the past.
Yeah, so we've been uh, flying drones since 2018 roughly. Uh, this is kind of the next evolution of the drone program, if you will, to where now we can fly a drone remotely from an office such as here. Uh, Tracy can do it from here. Uh, you can launch a drone from there. Basically, it will have what's called a Nest, which will be above our station to basically launch the drone from there remotely. Uh, if you have a call for service, it'll be attached to the CAD feature, which is a computer automated dispatch. So if a call comes out, you can just merely send the drone automatically straight to that area. And then while that's happening, the remote pilot, who's in a controlled environment, can monitor the call and begin to give situational awareness to an officer. Uh, we anticipate being on calls much sooner. The response time will be quicker. We can go from our farthest west end of the city to the farthest northeast end or the farthest southeast end within 90 seconds or less, depending on where the call for service is. When you couple that with our live 911 feature, uh, we can be overhead and getting information about a call for service that's potentially coming in before the call's even dispatched. Uh, so we could look to uh, get basically calls much sooner, uh, potentially keep our community much safer. Uh, it's a definitely a great tool to uh, avoid certain situations from happening and escalating to where if you have the overhead and overwatch view, you can get real-time information as to what's happening. Uh, the success stories will happen very quickly once we launch this program. I'm very hopeful that this will go through.
Outstanding. And then given that this will be new, you know, residents aren't used to drones flying overhead, there'll be a communication plan going out as this is deployed next year at some point, right?
Yeah, I anticipate deploying everything by first quarter of next year. Once we get our drone pilots up and running, as far as knowing, understanding the software system, understanding how it works, there is a method where we can allow and show every flight to the community if they want to see when we're flying, how often we're flying, what we're doing, the calls for service that we're clearing, that's basically freeing our officers that are on the field by a drone doing it itself. That'll be something, again, a thing that we're looking forward to do.
I think it'll be important for people to know that these are responses to calls for service and not persistent surveillance.
Correct. Absolutely not. There'll be policy to avoid that from happening, for sure.
And will these drones be used within our city?
Yes.
Exclusively?
This is, this one will be exclusively here, launched here from our city, and it'll stay in the city.
I have a question. So the um, the footage from the drones, can that be used as evidence?
Yes, it can be. I've had it, again, in my prior experience, we used it to basically present it to the DA's office, and they use that as evidence to basically prosecute people. Yes, definitely can be used.
All right, thank you. I'll move approval.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, five zero. Thank you. All right, I'm going to suggest, we have no one here for the billboard item, but we have a couple people here. We have someone here for Clutters Park, and we have someone here for Teen Center. So what would staff prefer? Would you like to go with the Teen Center or Rec Park Teen Plaza schematic design or Clutter Park first? Clutter Park it is. We're going to move up item 20. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself because I own property within 500 feet of this location, so I'll be stepping down.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Boils and members of the City Council. Tonight, staff is presenting a brief update on issues related to Clutters Park. Clutters Park is maintained by city staff and the city's contracted landscape maintenance vendor, Parkwood. Any complaints regarding criminal activity, excessive noise, or illegally parked cars are handled by the El Segundo Police Department. In recent months, staff have received complaints from residents surrounding the park about possible illegal activity. excessive noise, illegally parked cars, and other issues. The El Segundo Police Department is tracking these calls for service and responding as needed. Staff will be considering adding security cameras to the park, and ESPD has already begun adding additional patrols. The maintenance and upkeep of Clutters Park falls under the jurisdiction of the Recreation Parks and Library Department. In recent months, staff have identified a number of maintenance and repair issues that need to be addressed at the park, including excessive trash and debris on the slope adjacent to the park and also in the streets there adjacent to the park, dead and overgrown vegetation on the slope, excessive stains and dirt on the sidewalks, trash cans that are in disrepair and need to be replaced, railings that are chipped with paint, chipped paint and rusted, benches in the same condition, excessive trash and debris in the curbs and gutters directly adjacent to the park and also around the park parcel. The Director of Recreation Parks and Library is working with the park maintenance team on a timeline for completion of all the listed repair and maintenance issues with all items being completed by March first, two thousand and twenty-five. Many of the issues will be addressed prior to that deadline. Because Clutters Park has become a local attraction for local aviation enthusiasts, staff will be requesting funding from the Cultural Development Fund to include new artistic elements or public art pieces at the park that highlight the city's unique relationship with LAX and the history with the aerospace industry. And that concludes my portion of the report. Uh, I know Chief Rodriguez is here and available for questions as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Mancini. I think there are gonna be a couple different questions. Would someone like to proceed before me?
Sure. I'll be first in.
Oh, you're here.
So I got a couple questions. First of all, um, when did the benches and the tables get put in, and who decided that?
So we looked, uh, Elias and I both looked. We couldn't find an exact history. However, today I did locate a cover letter from two thousand and four, where the former Director of Recreation, Stacia Mancini, um, was submitting a grant agreement for improvements to Clutters Park and the Vista. So I haven't found the actual agreement documents, but I'm assuming it was sometime around then, possibly even earlier. But it looks like we did an update at that time or received some sort of funding.
So twenty years ago, we received funding, but didn't receive any funding to maintain it. We just re, just did it to build it, okay?
Correct.
So how much does the Parkwood cost to, to, to maintain that area? And are we talking about Clutters Park, does that include the Dog Park, or does that include just that one aviation outlook situation?
Clutters Park, uh, as far as we're concerned, as far as the jurisdiction for the cleaning and repair and maintenance, is just that parcel. The Dog Park is separate.
I would assume that the added cost of this now, since we've set it up as a viewing deck, um, has been significant over the years, or is, judging from what you're showing me now, is going to be significant.
We're gonna need to put some money into it.
Okay, so there's another one. So then you said you added security, right? Security cameras?
Correct.
Added patrol?
Yes.
Cost, cost, cost.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody aware that Clutters Park is available on TripAdvisor as a place to go that is free? We have created something that does not benefit the city at all. We have created something that benefits people who are into aviation. I don't personally believe that out of the people that go there, that there is a very large percentage that are people from El Segundo. And what this area is now doing is causing consternation and problems for the people who live there. I don't believe that, that viewer's deck, while nice to have, adds anything to the city. So my question would be, not only am I not interested whatsoever in using money from a cultural development fund to enhance an area that is already having problems, I'm questioning why we even have it. And I'll stop there.
Thank you, Councilman Drew. I think the history goes back to Councilmember Clutter, who is a very staunch advocate for the city of LA against LAX expansion and the noise. So there's history there, if, unless I've gotten that incorrect, I'm pretty sure about that. Um, so I'm not in favor of eliminating it altogether because it was a modest to an individual, but I do, I do agree, I think it's become a burden for police, wrecking park, uh, there's trash, and we've been hearing about this for a couple of years now, so much so that a few of the residents wanted us to consider, you know, different street traffic arrangements, which we looked into and discussed with you, Elias. And I think at the very least, a camera, I think, helps. I think limited hours, maybe even taking away parking. There should be disincentives for people to, to go, I think. And I think it's kind of run its course. I think people should be able to go, but we shouldn't encouraging a lot of people to be there. And certainly, it seems like most of the, uh, I don't know, call it adverse activity happens in the evening from the reports that I've gotten from residents. So I would absolutely support limiting, creating disincentives for people to go there, given, you know, but still honoring the person that created that park with a vision of fighting LAX for some.
So doing some repairs, not necessarily public art, but getting it up.
Putting art or any things there to bring people there. Certainly would not encourage any incentives for bringing people to the site.
And you're saying limiting hours, maybe, uh, to, to.
Well, until ten.
Till ten, correct.
Why is, why is it need to be open till ten? I mean, six PM or something, and maybe more red parking, people can't park there. Just something to discourage, uh, you know, a lot of activity up there. I've driven by there. I mean, there, there are the enthusiasts with the huge cameras. They love that. I mean, um, but I agree with Councilman Drew, it's bringing a lot of people into town, and I don't think it's, if we're bringing a lot of people into downtown, that's great, but we're bringing people into the middle of a residential community, which is already pretty impacted by a new residential development that went in and some other things. And, Councilmembers?
So my husband used to take our daughters to Clutters Park every day, every, what, every Friday. They get their, pick up their Subway sandwich after school and go look at the planes and talk about all their relatives far, far away. So, um, it is a park that historically was used by residents. Um, and I think unfortunately, as we see with Candy King Lane with social media, it just, it explodes. So I'm not in favor of getting rid of it, but I do think we need to minimize it. And there's no reason why we couldn't put, um, like, a parking, a parking limit supposed to certain hours unless you have a permit. You can't pa- park here from, you know, from six PM till eight AM, um, for that strip. So to force people to have to walk up the hill if they want to go there, so they're not just hanging out there. Um, but I think there's some things, creative ways we could come, come about managing it. Um, I do, you know, my issue on the maintenance, I, I feel this strongly, and you know, Ally, um, about all of our parks, that we don't, we have not been investing in our parks on a roll, and we need to come up with a rolling maintenance schedule for all of our parks. Um, this is not the only park that has peeling paint and that is at disrepair. And it's just something that I know we as a, you know, as a city have not put the money into our parks as I think we should have. And I hope in the future that that becomes, that it's on a rolling schedule and that maintenance, so, because it's like one of those things, if you let something get to so, such a disrepair, it costs a lot money to fix, to replace it. You know, if you have a leak, a small leak in your house, and you don't fix it, and all of a sudden, you know, you wait ten years later, you gotta replace the whole roof and the ceiling and everything else.
Right.
Um, where the, the little leak would have been cost effective, so. Um, I do think there's some creative ways we could come around limiting access to the park, especially in the night hours.
I, I would echo most of that. I think thematically, in the last few months, we've seen park maintenance just being attuned to maintenance is something that we see in everything outside of Rec Park. I mean, that is, that is a thing that, that we need to highlight to, to park staff, point those things out, whether it's light bulbs at campus or cleanliness in this area. Uh, I also think there's a, there's a value to the park, but I would much rather see if we're gonna put money into, to fixtures than being signs that remind people, like, hey, you're here to take pictures of planes and count tail numbers and look at the various engine configurations and all those great things. Make sure you police your stuff up, throw it away, and at sundown or, or, or at eight PM or six PM or whenever you close it, we ask them to leave. I know the police patrol that area anyway because they're patrolling along Imperial. Uh, I don't know that extra patrols there are a particular burden, because I think it's part of, of, of the beat. But I think with, with some clear signage, better trash cans, more regular maintenance, uh, I think that will encourage, I would hope would encourage good behavior. If we're having this same conversation come springtime, I think, I think, um, we may have to take more decisive action, because I think that, that we should be able to see dividends reasonably quickly. People who have five thousand dollars worth of cameras aren't typically people who leave cigarette packs laying around on the ground. Uh, it's a different demographic, so.
So how, how quickly could we change the parking and put, like, turn it so that it's, because right now it's open parking, right? Do we need to, you know, put a, a red zone, or like, not a red zone, but no parking after, between these hours?
Yes, we, we could do that fairly quickly. If this is the consent of the city council, we could implement that fairly quickly.
I mean, would the, how are the neighbors, would they be okay with implementing that?
Do, I just, city attorney, do we have to, this is a receiving file, can we weigh in on this? Are we good?
Well, the man threw back some additional, um, action items for this, but, I mean, give staff some direction, and they'll do what they need to do.
Bring back. Yeah, I think we'd want to see what you heard here brought back to us.
We'll, we'll make it happen.
Great.
And then while we're talking, I know the Dog Park isn't part of it, but it kind of is considered part of it. Um, you know, we, we have our own yard here where there's always wood chips available. Can we not, and I don't know if they're good for the dogs, but can we not at least put some of those wood chips in, in the,
Dog park?
The park park, to stop the erosion that's going on over there? So I just think that there's, we have the facility, I, because I see the piles of wood chips there, free for everyone to take, but we don't seem to use them ourselves. So can we?
Yes, we can look into that, and I, I agree. I think we've got some park maintenance issues that we're, we're gonna do a better job of addressing. They're doing routine checks, I'm having them do written reports. You all will get a copy of that, so we could stay on top of it.
I would like, you know, um, I would like if you could create a maintenance schedule and have it published, and so that the council or if there's clear transparency for the community to say, oh, this park is due for a ren- renovation, so that it's on schedule, that the maintenance is, you know, I don't know if you want to come up with a, every, every six months, there's a, a slight refresh, but every five years, there's an overhaul, but a schedule should be made, set for each of our parks. And so it, and it holds us true to ensuring that those parks are done.
Agree.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, is the consultant here? We were waiting on somebody. Okay, so we're gonna move up item nineteen as well. This is a recreation park renovation project phase one, proposed teen center and teen plaza schematic design.
Yes. Good evening again, honorable mayor, members of the council. Um, I am going to ask, um, I'm gonna turn this presentation over to our recreation manager, Linnea Palmer.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. On August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, a joint meeting of the city council and Recreation and Parks Commission was held at the Jawsen Center to consider options for moving ahead with park updates. At the meeting, the city council and the Recreation and Parks Commission directed staff to retain the existing layout of recreation park while making needed upgrades using a phased approach. This would include making a series of renovations and updates to each facility or amenity over time as funding is available. The first element identified in phase one improvements is the renovation to the teen center and teen plaza. This would include interior renovation and cosmetic exterior improvements to the existing teen center building, renovation of the teen plaza, new skate park, new multi-use court, parking lot renovations to incorporate drop-off and accessibility improvements. Throughout the, throughout the design process, the consultants were tasked with providing options for the teen plaza. These options included keeping the exact footprint of the skate park while leaving the basketball court as is, keeping the same footprint of the skate park while updating the basketball court area, and reconfiguring the basketball court to allow for an expanded-sized skate park. After bringing the options to the park renovation committee, Recreation Park Commission, recreation staff, teen advisory committee, and council, MIG was directed to move forward with option two. Retain the general footprint of the teen plaza, but include complete demolition of both the skate park and the basketball multi-use court to allow for grading and a new concrete multi-use court with a slight orientation shift. Throughout the schematic design process, the Recreation Parks and Library Department, along with MIG, TIG Architecture, and Spawn Ranch, hosted a community workshop at the teen center and attended El Segundo Middle School lunch periods to garner feedback from teens on the teen center and teen plaza designs. On November twentieth, the following presentation was brought before the Recreation Parks Commission. The commission voted four oh in favor of the schematic design with a caveat, with a caveat that exterior lighting is to be added into the final design and related cost estimates. Tonight, Jennifer Zell from MIG will be presenting the design process, teen plaza overview and updated project costs. Erin Spawn from Spawn Ranch will provide the skate park design overview, and Kervin Lau from TIG Architecture will present the teen center designs and concepts. Staff and consultants will be available to answer any questions you may have at the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Um, as Linnea mentioned, we came before you, um, um, September, September seventeenth, and you recommended to us option two. And that is the option that we took and moved forward. And, um, we prepared some exhibits and questionnaires and different, um, items to get feedback from the community. We had a community meeting and teen meeting at the teen center. And, um, we provided questionnaire and different, um, thank you. And, um, different feedback points to the community. There's about forty that showed up at that meeting, um, teens as well as staff and parents. And, um, we got their feedback through those questionnaires, but we also got feedback, quantitative feedback and qualitative feedback by having an open discussion and conversations um, with what was presented. And so we took that information, we took that feedback and have developed that with the team, and that's what we're presenting to you tonight. And so this is a reminder, was option two, new, um, new multipurpose court here, which we're showing, as well as a new skate park. And one, one thing I want to point out is, um, the, the meridian line between the two of them. And, um, it's the line right there. Hmm, that's not really working on the screen. It's the, yeah, right there. Thank you. It's that gold line that's separating the skate park from the new multipurpose court. And I wanted to make sure we went over that and what that line, what's happening in that division line. We've got about a four hundred and, four hundred and sixty square foot differentiation right there of a shift by shifting the basketball, uh, the multipurpose court, making it smaller, making it a junior high dimension, as well as working in the fence, the fence connection there, and the seat wall, and the ramps. And we'll get into that a little bit more, but I wanted to make sure I provided that number, um, today for you. It's about a four hundred and sixty square foot difference. Um, and so we went to the community. Erin can speak a little bit about what that feedback was and how exactly that feedback got incorporated to the design development. Um, here are some students, but we got, we got their feedback on a lot of these items. We mapped it, we measured it, we provided data, um, of what was heard. And, um, overall, what we heard in that meeting was a preference for, uh, uh, again, an option B here, which is a larger bowl. You can see that in the items B, upper left-hand corner, as well as an elongated street plaza, which you see in the bottom portion of this slide on the lower right. And that corroborates what Linnea and Ally heard when they went to the junior high and asked students and staff there, is they really wanted option B. And additionally, we brought, or Kervin, um, brought a model so that people could sort of interact and see how that interior space at the teen center could, could go together and what that looked like. That's the model you see here on the right. And we got a lot of terrific feedback. Um, we heard that, um, it needs to be durable, it needs to be wipeable. And what we didn't record here, but something that's important, is that we heard that students really want uh, just a nice, happy place to go and meet and connect with their friends, a place to feel safe. Makes sense, it seems obvious, but it's a reminder of what the purpose of that place is. And the students wrote it down pretty sweetly in their responses. Um, and so at the teen center, uh, excuse me, at the teen plaza, these are some of the primary findings that we already mentioned. Option B, fencing around the multipurpose court is desired for locking that area up. We also heard loud and clear, we need lockable biking park. It's needed. We show that in the design we're showing you today. Um, most users are advanced skateboard users, but of course, there are some beginners within that mix as well. And, um, they ride skateboarder, this. And, um, they ride skateboarder, this rides skateboards and scooters. Most want to play basketball and they want good lighting. And as noted before, lighting was not included, except for at the building in the proposal. That was something that the Parks and Rec Commission recommended be added to the project based on this expressed desire for lighting. On the teen center findings, um, I think overall, most people responded very positively to open, flexible environment, be able to program it and use it multiple ways, um, lots of space for new shelves, storage. Um, another aspect is that sight lines are maintained so people can see what's happening within the building from, you know, one perspective. And we'll show a little bit of that in a, um, Kervin will present how that plays out in the site plan. And we also heard about the mural that it really needs to express all of El Segundo, not just skating and skate park types of features. And, um, it's gonna be completed and headed by the arts and culture committee. And, um, so what I want to do now is just walk you around this, the plaza and how it's playing out with the site plan. Starting with, um, the entry, yeah, it doesn't work on the screen somehow. Yeah. You've got another one. Thanks, Kervin. How did that work? Um, there's the, oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay. So what I wanted to do is starting off of grand. Um, so you, so if you're arriving off of the street, you're walking up onto this hill, kind of a high point here. And this is the primary entrance into the teen center that you see here. And it's actually a ramp. It provides ADA accessibility from the sidewalk. Um, and you also have the option, this is a secondary entry into the plaza and it puts you into the skate park. That's why we're showing a couple stairs to signify movement into a different space. It's a second entry right here off of the street and puts you into the skate park, but you can get into the plaza building here as well. And if you're coming and you need to park and have accessible route of travel, you actually enter here, 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 and you go into the, um, teen center building right there. And so we're really holding the grades level in this area to get a smooth transition from the inside of the building to the outside of the building and a flow ADA accessibility really entering into the skate park at this point here. And so moving, I guess, counterclockwise, um, here, that's the building entry. This area is lifted up slightly to accommodate that grow, uh, the grade change. So we get a nice indoor-outdoor feel. You'll see some images of what that looks like. Um, this is a low retaining wall to absorb the grade to keep, of course, a flat court and keep this indoor-outdoor exchange here between the teen center. And, um, there is some spectator seating. We, we heard, we asked, um, users if they wanted more spectating and watching or if they wanted more, um, features, skate features, and they unanimously wanted more skate features, less spectating. And so where that ends up is here up in the upper right-hand corners. And another potential place for watching is maybe in this landscape space here. We may be able to carve out those benches now. Might be able to keep seating in that zone there. But again, this is not much changed. It's just improved for some drainage. Um, this, this area here to the north, this, this north connection is still here, of course, maintained. Um, there's a couple, right now we're showing built-in kind of spectator seat walls here. Um, and, and then this, of course, now is striped for basketball, but it can have other stripings as needed. Um, and right along this, this zone here going east to west is going to be a fence, probably we hope a large sliding gate to allow for that open exchange. Um, and then I'll let, um, Erin speak more to the skate, the skate park and the flow of it. He'll be better prepared.
Before we move on.
Yeah.
This is showing a perimeter fence of forty, forty-two inches.
Two inches, yes.
Three and a half feet surrounding the skate park.
Correct.
And there is no way to, this, this layout, there's no way to close the skate park.
Correct.
It's just always open.
Correct.
And even if we closed it a four and a half or three and a half foot fence, anyone's gonna jump that anyway.
The fence is more symbolic and for possibly holding in, um, skate park, I mean, excuse me, skate, pardon? Bikers and skateboarding in case the flying boards, a little bit of that as well, and just defining the skate park itself.
Okay. Currently, we have a, a fence that we can close the skate park if we need to close the skate park.
It's always open.
I know it's always open, but there is a gate there, right?
They removed it years ago.
Oh, okay. All right. And then I, the, the seating you have next to the basketball court, I, I get how, you know, people don't want to watch other people skate, but we do hold like basketball tournaments that are pretty well populated. And I'm, I'm concerned that the limited seating you have there might not be enough. If it's less than the bleachers we have now, this little number, number two between the skate park and the basketball court. Um, I feel like that could be expanded a little bit more to add more seating or just areas for kids to sit and talk and hang out and just do nothing, right?
And ensure that we're getting the same amount of seating as we have now with the temporary removable bleachers essentially.
Right. I just don't, I, I don't understand why we have all this open space if we could have more seating there for, for anyone to use.
And we talked about graduated seating there in concrete steps.
Yeah, like it would have been something more substantial than what we're seeing now that we kicked around at the subcommittee of, oh, we could have like teared concrete steps.
And that's what, yeah, we definitely talked about that.
Yeah, right now it's just showing too long.
Yeah, I would, I would. I would prefer to have something a little more robust there to service the needs of events or, you know, whatever else tournaments we might be hosting on the basketball court. And then my other concern is the bike rack out front near the street. This is gonna be like a drop off area.
Yes.
And I, I don't know if that's the most secure location for our kids to put their five thousand dollar electric bikes. Like, could we do it around this cubby on the, it's gonna be the north, that little dead area?
We just had that conversation again this morning.
Like, I get you gotta go through this walkway, but I, I mean, I'd, I'd be concerned about my bike sitting on the street and me going inside and not having eyes on it. It, I would feel more secure if it was parked within the teen center around the edge of the building unless, yeah, where that, I don't know.
Where the stairs are.
It's just like a dead space right now. Those are my two things.
No, we just need to make sure we get clearance, um, for walking between the two of them.
Right. You gotta have the ADA compliance.
Yeah.
But you don't want, you don't want someone skating from here into the basketball court anyway. There's gotta be some type of barrier. I mean, it, it does say they're gonna have a forty-eight foot high court fence. So where would the court fence go?
Uh, basically right here, it's sort of circumscribes from here, this kind of building feature out here and all around to there is essentially closed in at eight feet.
Okay.
Um, one thing, one thing, I don't know if it's possible, we can add the bike. We did get, we did, we did hear that we did want some bike parking here up on the street area. I think it's going to get a little tight even in these areas. What we discussed this morning is possibly adding one or two bike parallel to the building in these areas. Um, just to get additional bike parking. They'll probably be the most used.
Okay.
But we'll keep working on it for the next, okay.
Fair enough.
Get as many as we can. Okay. Anything else while we're here looking at the site plan? Um, these are, these are some great, this is our initial grading. This, if you're interested, this is kind of some of the grade elevations of how you get to the site. Um, we don't have to spend time on it though, but, um, we will move, it, it'd be nice to remove maybe one or two of those and relocate them in the interior. These are some of the materials, um, um, that are proposed, mostly natural gray concrete for a lot of the features. We did already, we already have heard back, we want a really fantastic monument sign, something much better than what I'm showing here in number seven. We heard, we will, we will do that and make sure that happens. We have one security light. Um, and then I'm gonna pass it over now and let Erin walk through.
So real quick, while you're transitioning, on the lighting, are we adding additional lighting for safety? It's gonna be the same lighting?
Sure. The commission requested new lighting.
Yes.
To be added. We had one sort of security light.
Because if it is open twenty-four hours, it's, it's kind of, because what, you can get into the skate park having some lights there. Not twenty, not the lights twenty-four hours, but.
Yeah. So it's not officially open. It's just, it's like we mentioned, this fence has been removed. But the, the current plan that, that they're showing tonight only shows one light, but when they took this to the commission two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, they said, we would like the council to consider at, you know, adding additional lighting, but that would be obviously an additional cost.
Would you guys be open to the additional lighting?
Isn't it lit right now? Am I crazy? I feel like I'd drive by and see.
It's lit, um, just not very nice.
Not ideal.
It's a kind of dim yellowish light. So the lighting on the court for the afternoons isn't ideal as well as the skate park.
So I'm open to adding the additional lighting if my other council.
What are the hours of the park?
Well, the parks, and, and our park hours, our parks are open until ten o'clock. So this doesn't have specific hours, but we don't, it's not lit.
For the teen center, it's only three to eight right now.
It gets dark in the evening, in, in the winter by five, so.
So that would just be up to the council.
I'm a yay for the lighting.
If it's shielded and directional, I do not see any downside to having a well-lit teen center with plenty of visibility windows.
Yes.
Yeah, no, no objection to the lighting. But I guess my question is then, eight oh five rolls around, we turn the lights off? How do we signify that we don't want people hanging out there all hours?
They would go off then, I would assume at ten o'clock because those are the park hours unless we wanted to change the park hours. The teen center closes at eight, but because it's a park, it, it would officially stay open until ten.
We could sanction that area to close at eight o'clock.
Yes.
With the teen center, since there's no oversight there.
I've never thought of the skate park as being a separate park from the teen center. It's just, the teen center has a skate park.
So maybe we just.
I mean, I get that the gate is gone, but it seems weird just to have this twenty-four, seven skate park with a four and a half foot fence you can jump over anytime. It's not even locked up. So are we okay with that being, being available all the time? Yeah, the staff is gone at eight and we've got that place lit up till ten, like what's going on over there?
We don't provide oversight to the skate park currently.
But what I'm saying is you have no one there at all.
Correct.
That's a problem.
After eight PM.
I think we should turn off the lights.
Most far parks, yeah, not staffed.
Well, should we fence off the skate park? Should we have some control over it to say when it's open and when it's closed? Cause right now it's just an open design where you can go whenever, wherever you want.
We have plenty of parks that people just walk into.
Yeah, that's true.
Insufficient lighting, like I think it's.
Just, just change the, I would put the lighting down at eight o'clock at the skate park.
Why would we discourage teenagers from skating after eight PM in the summer?
Right.
I think, I don't know why we do that. I mean.
Or are we saying that it should be staffed? If, if we're considering the, the teen center and all of our parks under the same umbrella, then shouldn't it be staffed until ten o'clock at night?
Not all of our parks are staffed until.
I know they're not currently, but shouldn't they be? Cause I know we've discussed that.
That's a much bigger question.
Well, it's a discussion, it's a, it's a discussion and, and something that's been brought up here many times.
Yes.
So I don't think there's any dissent on whether we should have it staffed. I, it's just a matter of when do we get it staffed?
Correct.
We say the skate, skate park or the teen center?
The teen center.
Okay.
It's one and the same.
Well, the skate park, the city doesn't want to staff because if you staff it and you're liable.
Then we own it. I mean, we own the boo-boos. We don't want to own the boo-boos.
The law's very clear on that. So we don't want to, well, unless you want to be liable for people to injure themselves out there, that you don't want to be staffing it.
Right.
Okay.
I think that's why the difference was made.
I'm fine with the skate park being open, being well-lit, unstaffed, and the, the teen center is gonna have this twenty-four, right? The high perimeter fence, we would, would be able to close off.
Yes.
Okay. So we would lock up the basketball court and the teen center and everything and the park's just open.
Correct.
Fine with that. Okay with the new lights.
Thank you.
And then real, real quick, while we're transitioning, on the mural, we talked about this in the subcommittee. I want to make sure that we're clear that there's a plan on how long that mural is gonna be up and with a plan to re, um, refresh it within five years, ten years, whatever number of years it is. But I do want, I don't want that mural to go up and then twenty years later, looking at some faded mural because we never had a plan on when to refresh it. There needs to be a strategic plan on every five years it gets repainted, ten years, whatever the number of years we feel is the right number. I'm not out, I'm not a mural artist, but I want a set plan that is, and we get the funding from the arts and culture committee, that every five years, ten years, whatever the number is, that there's a new mural painted on that, that building.
Or that that building, or that it's updated.
Updated, yeah.
Yes. Understood.
Thank you. Um, so as Jenny mentioned, we had a really great community meeting. We had a good turnout, a number of kids and adults, parents, and so we, we had pretty good interaction with, with all the users. We did a visual survey, a written survey, gathered all their ideas and, and as you can see by the list of all the, the features that are in the park, um, the blue features being all of the street type elements and the red ones be more of the bowl and transition elements. Um, we've actually been able to squeeze in a fair number of, of features within the space. So we kind of feel pretty good and excited about that. Um, can definitely be more opportunity than there was in the park before. So I'm, I'm happy in the direction that we're headed. The, uh, as I mentioned, the, this area here is all the street features, all of the, um, the street skaters, and we have about sixty-five percent of the park is devoted to street elements. And then we have about thirty-five percent, uh, for all of the bowl and transition features over here. And, you know, quite honestly, that's pretty typical at what we see when we do public meetings around the country. It's usually about a forty, sixty, uh, this case thirty-five, sixty-five split between transition and, and street. And you have two different kinds of street of riders. You have the kind of riders that like all the stairs and the ledges and the rails, and you have the, the transition skaters like the bowls better. And sometimes you'll find your, your younger skaters are more of your street skaters and your older skaters might be more of your transition style skaters. And, you know, and also being a beach community, having a kind of a curvy surf kind of a, aspect of this park, I think also makes a lot of sense. So we, um, currently we are, we are actively working on getting all of our elevations and our connections to work. Our connection into the basketball court, into the teen center, potentially to a sidewalk connection here. The, the challenge of the park that we had before that you have currently is that there's two drops in the park. You come down, you drop, you come down, you drop again. Um, and so you had a very narrow kind of a downhill run. And once you're down to the bottom of the hill, you're like trying to get back up to the top. So we're trying to get more balance within the layout of the park. Um, and we're, we're having to do that while working with our, the elevations of our retaining walls around the perimeter. So we're currently trying to take this design and make it work and make it real. So that's, that's a process we're in currently. And as you can see, we had a little fun and we added, um, a couple of local iconic type features. We have the, the water tower uh, wall over here, and then we have the scatter good, um, stacks over here. Um, both kind of unique, um, graphical type elements that we added into the park. Things that when they appear on social media, um, kids are gonna know that's the El Segundo Park. Or kids from El Segundo are gonna be able to take a picture of themselves, um, like in front of the water tower with El Segundo behind them. It'll be really cool. Um, it just gives them a sense of ownership in this park, the uniqueness to this park. Um, we, we included a number of, like, we, we tried to include all the features that they asked for. And they also chose some features from other local parks, some that we had done, the Harbor City Park. Um, I think we talked about Manhattan Beach, but a number of these features are, are similar to features in the other parks that they really loved. Uh, we got a stair sit in there. We have like a slappy curb if, you know, a number of things, hubba. Things that maybe sound foreign, but, uh, the kids are, things that the kids definitely want. Um, and this, this is kind of a unique setup here, which could be an interesting opportunity for, for doing tricks. The feedback we got from the community meeting actually was that, uh, we were asking about what kind of like a, a motif or design motif or a vibe. And ocean and natural environment kind of got talked about as far as for the teen center. But when we came to designing the park, it seemed like these kind of, uh, industrial type. uh, industrial type elements kind of made sense. So it's just a, you know, it's a work in progress. We could, we could get feedback on this if it's something that you wanted to talk about. Um, but I thought that I think it's pretty, they also really interesting skate features as well. Oh, one other thing I would have mentioned is so by and large, this is a park that's designed for beginners. These are, or these are kind of lower features than you might find in in some typical skate parks. Um, we also don't want to generate a lot of speed coming in here. We want a kind of a little bit lower speed area. Um, we have a nice, pretty good drop, pretty good set of stairs. So this is, this is kind of more, a little bit more of an advanced section here. This is more beginner, just, um, you know, practicing skills and things like that. Um, this is a little bit more of a, an advanced feature, but we have, um, easier areas around as well. And then this bowl, we, um, we designed it so it has two sides of parallel coping, which kind of creates a mini ramp, which is a a mini ramp is a really good training feature, a really good practice feature. And the shallow end of the bowl is some, an area where or beginner skaters can can practice. We also have a little bit of a roll-in, so you don't have to drop in from the edge. You can actually stand in this roll-in to drop in. So that actually, or you can use this roll-in transfer in between the two areas. But then we also added a deeper pocket in the bowl and some pool coping here, and a little feature here and little pool coping here. So we have some stuff that's that's more for an advanced skater, like if a more advanced skater came here, they would have fun sessioning these little pockets. So by and large, I feel like we've done a pretty good job with with providing features both for beginners and advanced and, you know, meeting the the asks and the, you know, the goals of the community. So by and large, I'm happy. Um, our goal now is just to make it all work within our space and be able to build build it efficiently.
I have one question. On the color, the terracotta color, is that going to, is that going to be colored? Is it like going to be stained concrete or how are you gonna? Because right now it's just gray.
It is.
It is very stark gray.
It's it's become pretty common in skate parks to do, um, multi-color concretes.
Okay, so you like do a stain, like a concrete stain?
So as we show you, that would, that would be tinted concrete.
Okay, and it would be like a terracotta color?
Yeah, terracotta, and you could have a choice of colors, but typically you want to go with more earth tones because those are the, those are the lower, lower co- cost tints to add to concrete.
I think it would help because it adds dimension from that, and it's.
It does.
And when you drive by, it's so displeasing to see this gray concrete jungle where this kind of gives a little bit.
You know, it's also good for the users. When when they're, when they're like, maybe they're doing a spin or a trick like that, they turn around, having different colored, uh, planes helps them to more quickly visualize where they are in a park. And, you know, and it's almost got to the point where all gray skate parks just don't look finished anymore. Most most skate parks now have tinted concrete in them. And I will also add that the other elements, the the water tower and the in the, um, the scattered good, uh, smoke stacks, those would be painted graphic elements, and those, that would not be tinted concrete, paint on top of, on top of concrete.
Is the idea that that would just get it grinded down and we have a nice patina on that? Because I can't imagine that's going to hold up.
On the, on the.
On the painted areas.
Painted things would be something that would need to be maintained over time, but you can use acid itch type paints that bond really well to the concrete.
Okay. Um, my only, your design looks, looks great. Thanks for putting the water tower and the smoke stacks. I think it looks great. My my only old man concern is this, um, entrance with the steps into the skate park.
Sure.
And I'm just, I don't want to see kids like coming from the sidewalk and then dropping in off those steps. Um, so I'm wondering how important is that separate little step down that we have in between that green planter area? Or would we be more conservative to kind of just put planners there so all the kids have to come in the main entrance and then you can start skating? I don't want that step to become like another feature.
Sure.
It's number.
Part of the.
Three?
So, yeah, this is where you're talking about.
Total old man.
Part of the, well, let me say two things. One is that right now we are still working on our elevations. And our goal would be to get the elevation closer between the the park and the and the sidewalk. That's not essential, but part of the reason that we thought to have it is that you're going to have skaters and park users coming and going from the park, not having to go around and, you know, share um, the access through the other ramp. So so maybe there's more of a separation between teen center traffic and and skate park traffic. And the the other thing that we have not fully talked about on today is like the ability to open up the area between the 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 plaza and the skate park. And if if we do that, then we kind of have like a thoroughfare through here into the, into the, into the plaza area. And this area where the entrance here is, it's going to be very open. You're not going to, you know, you're not going to stumble in there into cross traffic and get run over. Um, and this is not a really high act, high activity area right here. So I, so once again, it's not essential, but it seemed like a good additive to include.
No, I got you. I just, I just don't want to design in an attractive nuisance that gets used in a creative way we haven't thought of.
You mean as far as like them actually trying to skate down it or things like that?
Yeah, like, because Grand's a very busy street. It's got a nice steep. We do our, our, uh, soapbox derby there, so I can see someone say, I'm going to bomb down Grand get, build my speed up, and then I'm going to come through the basketball court and it's just like, I mean, they're kids. They want to have fun, but we've got to worry about the potential, potential misuse. I'm not saying it's that cool.
I'm the type of person that would try to design those kind of hidden Easter eggs into a park design. You know, it's like, oh, my God, I didn't know you could do that. Um, or get use out of some, an area that, you know, dual use out of something. This is not that. This is not, that would not be a feature where anybody would ever try to do any kind of tricks there. So once again, it's not essential, but I don't think it would have the, the, maybe the negative impacts that you're you're concerned about.
I just had a question. So we were, you're just, you kind of triggered something when you're talking about the 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 a gate along the basketball court. Is there ever a time, like if we wanted to run an event at the space where we'd need to open up a gate that may be closed to open up the space? Like, so say that, say you're having a skate park, uh, fundraiser like the Nichols did, you know, where they they would maybe use the basketball court area as a staging area. Would there ever be a time or their need to have some type of ability to open up gates to allow for the expanded space? Since we're putting in new gates or fencing, do you understand what I'm saying? So is that, is it worthwhile discussing? Is it more, I, I, you know, you always want to think of the future? And is there ever a time where you want to just maybe use the whole, open the whole plaza for something, whatever that is?
Well, the the fence is still in, is evolving, but our current idea was to be able to have the fence roll open. So you'd have a wider opening between the two areas. About twenty foot wide open.
Just so that there's, so that way you activate the plaza if you have an event or something.
Yeah, or vice versa. Maybe you need spillover area from the.
Okay.
I think that's. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Aaron. Uh, thank you, uh, city council members. My name is Kerwin Love from Ty Architecture, part of the architecture team. I'm going to walk you through the teen center and interior renovations that we're proposing. As you know, this is existing, uh, teen center. As, as you know, this is a dark place. It's not well-lit. It is a, uh, it needs a refreshing look. Uh, the bathrooms are outdated. The backrooms are hidden. Uh, so we were brought up to the team to, uh, you know, bring, bring up this, uh, this space up to speed, up to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So, um, we're excited to show you what we have, uh, progressed in the past few months. As part of our design process, we like to, uh, look at the inspirations. At at this, uh, specific scenario, we're looking at the skate park and skateboards uh, and how how to bring that into the space. So we're looking at the materiality, uh, color, uh, different color pops that could be brought through different materiality and and seating arrangements. So uh, that was key for our design process. Uh, here are some inspiration photos. Uh, as Jenny mentioned, it it is very important to have durable materials. Uh, that's, uh, feedback that we got from the workshop, uh, community workshop, and, uh, also trying to integrate, as I mentioned, color, different textures and, uh, you know, bring, bring that connection to the skate park. Uh, here's the the floor plan, the proposed floor plan. I'm going to walk you through, uh, I'll start from the left. On the left side, you have the stage. Uh, currently it's at the corner. We thought it's not very usable at at the current location. It's not accessible either, so we thought it was, uh, important to have it in the main axis of the space. Uh, that's number one. Uh, we also incorporating, uh, steps that could also work as, uh, built-in seating for, um, you know, teenagers and hangout. It's like another space. So the idea is to create flexi- flexibility around the the different, uh, spaces of the program. Along this, uh, east wall, which is on the, uh, south of the page, uh, we have different areas for entertainment that could work for TV areas, uh, game areas, and multiple, uh, purpose uh, with TVs and media. Uh, that's number two and three. Uh, number four, we have the reception area here. Um, I'll show you a diagram why we decided to relocate it from this location to here um, for mostly, mostly visibility. Uh, number five, uh, sorry, number s- uh, seven, going here. Uh, this is a multipurpose room that could be used for art, um, or different type of classes that might be held in the teen center. Uh, number, uh, eight, we have four new all-gender toilets um, and two sinks, which are actually visible and open. Uh, we wanted to have that. Uh, you know, right now it's two separate bathrooms and they're enclosed. Again, they need to be updated, so we thought, uh, uh, with the, with the feedback from the city staff is that they need to be all-gender, um, and revamped. On number nine, we have a game room, um, slash board game, uh, board games. Um, number ten, we have a choir room. Uh, number eleven, we have office staff. And then number twelve, we have different storage area here, here, and and behind the stage. And I'll explain UI in a sec. Um, again, the idea of the space is to be flexible, as flexible as possible, so if there's a movie night or if there's a performance, uh, there could be chairs that are stored behind these walls and brought up, and this shows the flexibility of the space. Here's, here's a list of, uh, plan adjustments and enhancements that we have been asked throughout the process of the schematic design. First of all, it's, as Jenny and Aaron explained before, is the connection between the interior and the exterior, an accessible connection. So we're proposing to remove the existing, uh, high windows uh, to be replaced with roll-up doors to create that, um, physical connection, not only visual, but physical connection, and that will help bring some light into the space. Uh, number, uh, actually, letter B, new ceiling flooring and wall finishes with emphasis on color and acoustics. Um, I'll show you in a sec the renderings, how we're bringing that, uh, color pops based on the, our inspirations. Uh, C, oh, the the bathroom, which I previously talked, talked about, D, the new stage layout and orientation. Uh, E, new windows added for daylight. So as I mentioned, right now we're opening this up on the west side, but we are, we were also concerned about the back portion, right? So we're proposing to add a a opening here that it was actually an opening before, uh, we inspected the site and there was a previous opening here, so the idea is to bring that, uh, window back, and that will actually get you, uh, views towards the water tank. And, uh, another opening here on the north side, which will get you some nice views towards the the rest of the park. Uh, also, there's a new interior window between the office staff and the, uh, and the choir room. This choir room, there were some concerns in the commission about visibility and security, so uh, we are also incorporating, uh, window here, and and this will be a glass door, so there's always visibility towards this space. Also everywhere, yes. Sink in the art room, uh, new staff reception desk here, which, uh, this diagram explains why we have allocated here. We want visibility, as I mentioned before, throughout the entire space, even the bathroom. So the idea is that from this space, you'll be able to encounter everything on on the space. Uh, now we're moving to the exterior. Um, this, on the top, you'll see the existing elevation. The the proposed plan is to remove those, uh, concrete blocks. Um, some of them are chipped. Some of them are in good condition. They're actually pretty nice. I would love to 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 keep them, but in reality, uh, in order to restore the other ones, it it's not worth it, so we're proposing actually to remove it and, uh, resurface the area uh, in order to incorporate this mural idea, um, that we previously, uh, mentioned about. Uh, we're also proposing to raise this, um, three feet up, this parpet. We thought it was important for the building to create an identity, not only, uh, with the graphic, but also like a, like a, uh, I guess, a monumental, uh, uh, feature. And, um, also here, you're, we're showing the, uh, existing high windows, and now we're proposing the, uh, the roll-up doors that can be open. Uh, the mural transitions to the south elevation, and that's existing, that's a new. And the east, that's a existing window, actually existing opening that we're bringing back with that window. It's a high window. And then the, uh, the smaller window on the north side for, uh, visibility and light into that choir room. Here's a view from the, uh, plaza, looking into the the teen center. As you, as you can see, we're trying to bring some of that color back, uh, trying to tie into the, you know, not only the basketball court, but also the skate park. And, uh, we're bringing some of that color into these wing walls and of course the mural. Uh, and just FYI, the the mural, it's a, you know, it's a work in progress. It's not going to be decided until we go to the Arts Committee, Arts and Culture Committee. Uh, so it's a TBD. Uh, here's a view from, um, Grand. Um, this does not show the fence that Jenny described, but this was an early iteration. And we presented this, a few options to the, uh, committee, um, community, and we got very good feedback. They, they loved the idea of bringing that ocean vibe, that beach vibe into the space, so I I hope we can get a consensus on a, on a mural piece that everybody likes. Uh, moving into the interior of the space, you can see, uh, how we're bringing the color, uh, with acoustical panels. We're dropping them, um, uh, right below the 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 exposed beams. Uh, currently, there's an A C T ceiling, which is not in very good condition, so our proposal is to uh, blow everything up and then open it up, create more height into the space, uh, bring, bring some color, add some lighting fixtures. And also that translates into the walls as well. Uh, each of these media areas are kind of framed within these acoustical panels. Uh, that was one of the, uh, community concerns and staff about the sound. So it's, it is important for us to to take care of the, um, acoustical conditions. And here's the stage. You can see how, you know, potentially kids might be hanging out here, and then these walls are going all the way to the ceiling to create some sort of storage. And again, this is part of the furnishing, but we we love to, the idea of bringing some of that skateboards into the space. Uh, this is backing up a little bit more north. Uh, this is the multipurpose room with a, a bunch of, um, shelves and and storage, um, and a potential, you know, multipurpose room for many, uh, activities. This is backing a little bit further into the north, which is the game room. Uh, this is the the window looking into the water tank. And this is the choir room. Uh, the proportion of the window has changed a little bit after getting some structural feedback, so it will be a little bit thinner, but taller. And then this is the, uh, the window towards the office, um, staff. And this is looking from the stage into the, uh, the back, the north. As you can see, the bathrooms or the toilets are very visible, the open sinks, we have that open sink, uh, concept. And then we're, um, mimicking that on the other side with with more storage. Um, and then here, the clear sight, visibility towards the back of the room. And that wraps up my interior presentation. And then, do you have any questions? Or we can move into the cost estimates. And then, do you have any questions or we can move into the cost estimates? No? Okay. Thank you.
So what we have for you today as well is an updated cost proposal. We have a cost estimator on our team who provided this day before Thanksgiving. And so the costs have changed, moved around slightly from what we presented initially. The, I'll tell you the good news first. Teen Center went down. It was about 400, 450 a square foot. Now it's about 350 a square foot. But the teen plaza has gone up. And one of the main reasons is our cost estimator is advising us at a 9% escalation. So, yeah, it's, but it's maybe a pessimistic view of materials and the next prices. But it's a 9% escalation, which drove that price up almost 300,000. And then there was some, you know, some movement as well. Demo increased a little bit. I think I underestimated what's here is site mechanical utilities. That site drainage, originally, we had about 55,000. Some of this can get possibly recouped by Measure W funding. We'll keep digging into that. And then we did add, and to add back in, we have an allowance for electrical, which wasn't included before at 55,000. That's if site lighting gets added back in. So that's where some of those numbers moved around. And then on the building, you can see, you can see the numbers here on the screen. And I have a detailed cost estimate, you know, we've provided it. If you, you know, we'll keep developing as the design develops. But we're pretty close within budget right now of what's been expressed and allocated. So.
I'll take your detail.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy?
I have a partial copy. I don't have a full.
All right, fair enough.
Yeah.
I mean, just because this is not what's reflected in our packet. It's substantially different. I mean, the escalation certainly. And that's just on the outdoors? I mean, is that, is there a cement shortage? I mean, we just don't have, we don't even have that $781,000 escalation in our packet.
Do you have, right now, do you have? Yes, yes.
We received these numbers today.
Today.
So we just updated the last slide to get what has developed since the design development.
I mean, but that escalation, that's not contingency. That's just a broad, we think everything's gonna be about this much more expensive?
That's a piece of it. We could do a one-to-one. I could sort of walk through a one-to-one.
Well, I mean, I'm just curious. Like, that's just for the plaza, and the plaza seems to be mostly cement with some lights.
There's a few things. So this, the cost estimate maybe that you're looking at, if you're looking at 2, 3, 5, 4, 8, 500. Okay, there are some changes that have happened between these two. These were our, this was our original, before we had a cost estimator, do a thorough cost estimate, site of the site work. This was our original estimate. And so what increased was demolition. It was at 140,000, now it's about at 178. The skate park is essentially the same, or is the same. We had the basketball court at 65, that's about the same. It's actually coming in at more like 70. And then it's actually not a one-to-one. But then site development at 242 now is at 625. And that's a big jump because it includes, it includes, that number includes a basketball court. And it includes, we added a small, we have two ramps there at the entrance. We have a ramp from the sidewalk as well as from the parking lot. That added, I think, 24,000. I mean, so there's an 80 ramp, but there's also a ramp from the side.
From 240 to 600, that's not ramps.
No, it's about 300, yeah. It's a 300,000 part, let's say 70,000 of that is a consolidation of the basketball court. So now we're at, what, 2?
And that's different from the basketball court line item we already have for 65?
We no longer have a line item for basketball court, because it, in what we're looking at.
Oh, yeah, because your packet's different.
Yeah, it's just incorporated into that 625, 625 number. There's, it's not an exact one-to-one. I mean, I can show you kind of where those.
I mean, it's just, it's a substantial change.
Yes.
I mean, it's three-quarters of a million dollar change.
Yes, and 300,000 of that just for the skate park and plaza is a 9% escalation. Because I was estimating at 35% for all the basically designed contingencies. That went up to 49.49. That's a big difference.
Is your cost estimator, same person would value engineer this a bit as well? Or is that a different function?
Yeah, we would work with them to value engineer, you know, if we need to get. The other thing that this, that number that increased, let's say the delta's about 240 of a difference, is a duplication of fences. Now, we have a 42, excuse me, 42-inch fence around the perimeter, and we have an eight-foot fence around the interior. That wasn't fully, we didn't know that yet. We didn't know if we just had an exterior fence, one single one. So there's some costs in there that have been added. And like I mentioned as well, we didn't have before that 55,000 placeholder for, excuse me. We, yeah, 55 for site electrical. That's kind of, that's a placeholder for added lights.
Don't we have light poles out there and it's just a fixture? Can't we just replace the light itself with an LED and not replace the pole? I mean, how is that 55 grand? But I guess we can drill down on this later.
Yeah.
This is just a rough estimate.
It's still SD.
It's not binding, it's just a ballpark.
You can use the dirt from Rec Park for the ramps. It's got cement in it already, it's fine.
Question on process, if we approve this tonight, when will you start getting bids? So we can see some real numbers.
Oh, okay, so just so you know the process, this is an SD cost estimate. And so we also have a high contingency still. So we are gonna refine our, we're gonna do design documents through a DD level, design development level. We're gonna have it costed again and come back. And it'll get further refined and further more accurate at that DD level. And that will let us know at that point what needs to be value engineered out so we get into the budget that you need to, and that's.
Then it would go out to bid, and then we would have another opportunity to approve the bids, correct? At the council level?
Design development, yeah. And that's a big, that's a very good, accurate picture. And that's where decisions will need to be made about how to land it in the budget. Please.
Just to, so everybody knows, this cost does not include any furniture that later on needs to be purchased, nor reflects any costs associated for construction management, because you're gonna have those costs added after you award. We have to hire an inspection consulting firm to make sure the construction is done according to the plans. So by no means, this is, you know, completely the whole enchilada. I just wanna let you guys know.
What did we have allocated for this?
I believe there's 8 million.
Initially, we'd said about just under 4 out of the 8 million dollars of Phase 1.
Right, so there's 8 point something, but that would include the teen center, the teen plaza, and then the two ball fields. So if we spend more on this, there would be less for the ball fields.
When you come back with that second set of designs, can you include the estimates for the furniture and the supervision so we can get a holistic picture of this? That'd be great.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions or comments?
My only last final question is, what's the, if we stay on track, what's the delivery date of this being completed? Yeah, just so that when the kids are skating in the park. I want a date that we can put up there and hold to it.
So right now, what we're looking at is June delivery of all the documents, going out to permitted and going out to bid. And then about, we're estimating about a year from that. It could be six, 12 months.
So a year in 2027. 2026. So summer 2026, we should have kids skating, no fall. Summer of 2026, we'll have kids skating on that park.
We also need time to advertise the project, go through getting an award.
Lay away from the mic.
If there are no further questions, would someone like to entertain a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Great, do you have a second?
Pimentel's second.
Well, do you know first, Pimentel's second? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Thank you all very much. A lot of work went into that, really appreciate it. All right, we're back up to 16, which is the, yes, review and discussion of billboard and off-site signage standards being permitted.
If I may, I'm just gonna take a minute here to get the PowerPoint set up.
That'll give the city attorney time to stretch. Do you want to stretch for this? I know you left signs. We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Item 16, review and discussion of billboard and off-site signage standards being permitted. It is 2024, and we have Mr. Sean Bourne up to present.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor. So it's been, it's been a while since I've been before you, so glad to be in front of you all again. So anyhow, I would say over the past year or so, planning staff has received some inquiries regarding large signage, billboard-type signage, advertising signage on some of the cities more tolerant. It's been, uh... It's been a while since I've been before you, so glad to be in front of you all again. So anyhow, um, I would say over the past year or so, planning staff has, uh, has received some inquiries regarding large signage, billboard-type signage, advertising signage on some of the cities more taller, prominent buildings throughout town. Now, historically, the city has been averse to allowing for these types of signage. I think, uh, more most, uh, uh, pinpointing is when the sign ordinance was last, uh, overhauled back in 2017. So, you know, now we're about seven years out. Again, we've kind of been averse to that. I think it's also important that staff come before you every now and then, check back with the policymakers, uh, such as yourself, to see if there's any changes, or if there's any appetite. In this case, see if there's any, uh, appetite to, uh, even explore the possibility of, of those, uh, types of signage. To take you through a little bit of, uh, history here, just for a quick second, like I indicated, uh, there was a comprehensive update to the city's sign ordinance. Excuse me, back in 2017. And in doing so, uh, it laid out the, uh... It laid out my... PowerPoint is not working, is what happened here. Okay, thank you, Ali. So I'll just go ahead and continue. Um, but, uh, it laid out, it laid out the purpose and intent, uh, of our zoning code, and it laid out kind of like a blueprint of, of what to expect in that. And I think a lot of it focused on the aesthetic impacts. And so with that, uh, you know, the aesthetic or visual impacts, you know, can have negative impacts on the environment. Uh, and discouraging over signage, which really that's the intent of this, is it, it does so in a way that preserves, uh, a, a desired environmental aesthetic along our commercial corridors. Uh, it avoids, uh, overstimulation and sign blindness. Sign blindness is kind of where, a term that we in planning use, where there's so many signs that drivers and pedestrians, you know, stop noticing them. Uh, and, uh, you know, that goes for both, uh, drivers and pedestrians as they traverse, uh, our corridors. Uh, and also to maintain the intent of sign types, which are consistent with, you know, our intuitive, uh, navigational inclinations. For example, you know, directional signage will direct you to certain areas, site identification to tell you that you've arrived at, at a certain, um, landmark. And then there's advertising for, for the, uh, actual, uh, businesses that are located on the premises. So, um, we, I think, in El Segundo had at one time, a little bit of that, uh, on Main Street. So this is, this is roughly around 1965. The, this photo is credited to one of our local landmark books. But, uh, you know, a lot has, we've grown from that, I think, um, you know, as, in terms of, of what we want to, to see our community grow into. And so we've gone from that to more of a cleaner look with, with a lot of our signage, and so kind of avoiding a lot of that, that, uh, that clutter. So in terms of what our current code allows for today, there's different, uh, uh, sign types. You know, signs, like I said, are intended for wayfinding, uh, identification, advertising of businesses and services that are on a particular property. Uh, in accordance with our code, you know, signage should be harmonious and, and communicate the purpose of the sign. So in, in this, uh, little cartoon here, uh, rendering here, there's these different types of signage that we do allow for. Uh, for example, we have, uh, uh, freestanding pole signs. Um, someone have the, uh, that little green?
Oh, that belonged.
Oh, that was a perfect one. But anyhow, um, so yeah, you have, you have your monument signs, your canopy-type signs that go over, uh, building entrances. You have kind of a, a rooftop sign, uh, kind of similar to what we, uh, you could see is, is over, like at the LA Times building. Uh, some of those types of it. Again, each of them has their, their purpose and intent, and it's really to, really, again, advertise that which is, um, you know, on, on particular properties. Uh, there's also, what falls under our, our sign code right now is the works of art. Uh, I know we were talking a little bit about murals earlier, but that kind of what is what we're talking about, um, in our code. It describes it as, as, uh, works of art, including decorative flags and murals, such as historical and community-oriented murals, which are not for commercial purposes, are permitted. And I think that's really, I highlight that because, again, it's something that should be artistic in nature. Uh, it's not something that's commercial and advertising for, you know, a business or for advertising for some kind of product. So again, works of art, those are meant to be artistic, whimsical, if you will, a tribute to our local, uh, history or regional history, and just, you know, sometimes just playing fun, as you, as you know, with, with some of these that are up here. You have Handprint Alley, and, uh, and it's kind of whimsical. Are they, are they falling or flying type of mural? So, again, those are the types of, uh, works of art that, uh, that we do allow. Again.
Real quick, just as a point, the mural that they put up for the teen center, does that break our sign code? Because it says El Segundo Teen Center on it.
Well, that, that is a city sign, so.
I know, but I just, we, we, if we're gonna tell people they can't do something, we shouldn't be doing it.
Yeah.
So just make sure, whatever mural you put up.
Well, I mean, it is saying the, the teen center. I mean, that is the teen center, so it's, 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 uh, it's pointing you to what's actually on the property.
It's a little gray.
Or colorful, depending how you look, look at it. So anyhow, um, our current regulations, they also prohibit certain signage. Uh, here's a kind of a, a list of the different types of signage that is currently blatantly prohibited by our code. You have balloons, those, those types of, you know, big gorilla balloons that are up on top of rooftops, you know, trying to sell furniture. Strobe lights, uh, signs that flash and, and rotate and pulsate, emanate, emanating, uh, sounds or odors. Uh, billboards, that's, uh, another one that's actually blatantly listed, and I think that's one of the topics that, why we are here today. Another prohibited, uh, uh, type of signage is the outdoor advertising and advertising structures. This is the definition, um, of, uh, the outdoor advertising structure. Again, it is prohibiting the signages that, and, and what it really does is gearing towards advertising that which is on the site. Again, billboards. These types of billboard signage are typically stuff that advertise for what's not on the site. Uh, other types of prohibitions include, uh, the advertising structure itself, and this is the actual definition. Well, I will pause here just for a second because what I want to do here, just knowing that there, these are prohibited, and to give a little color in terms of these prohibitions, I think it's also important to, to go back a little to 2017 because in looking through the video, uh, for those meetings, and it went to a couple times to the planning commission, as, as some will remember, and I think at that time, uh, some of the comments that really were, came, came out that was that there was, there was, they had concerns with billboards, and they, you know, specifically talked about billboards and advertising signage, uh, and that we not allow them. Uh, signs should maintain and complement the aesthetic nature of its surroundings by not allowing large, obnoxious signs. Another comment that was made was, uh, only off-site signage should be directional in nature and be no more than a certain distance from the location they're directing you to. And then there was also an, uh, expressing, uh, concerns with large signs on skyscrapers along PCH that catch the attention of drivers along PCH and could pose a potential hazard. So I just want to, you know, relay that. Again, those were the sentiments at that time. It then went to the council. The council adopted what we currently have now and what I've presented to you, so. Uh, but like I said, it's always important to come back to, to you, just to get some clarity and make sure that, you know, we still want to, you know, follow this type of, uh, the, the, what's been said before us, and, and if there's any change or desire to change or to look at other types of signage. So with that in mind, should we be allowing for large advertising signs on buildings that are not, uh, you know, for products rendered or products on site? So I think with these questions in mind, would we allow for, you know, digital-type reader boards, wraps, uh, paintings, building wraps? Um, if so, you know, is there, you know, what criteria should we be using? Or can we be using? Because even from a, uh, from a legal perspective, I think there was a little bit of information placed in the staff report that talks about some of the limitations that we may have legally in terms of, uh, trying to, uh, um, regulate content especially, and also regulating even some of the location that some places, some of these, uh, types of signage could go. So anyhow, with these questions in mind, I think what I'll do is, 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 uh... I think one of the things you probably could, probably asking yourself is, you know, where are some of these large buildings? Some of these large buildings in town where we could, they could possibly be, be looking at, uh, uh, being erected or placed? You know, we have, uh, the AT&T buildings. Those are large buildings, as you all know, on the 105 there. Uh, there's a series of four buildings where if we're to allow for, you know, large signs, building wraps, you know, they could make their way onto, you know, these types of structures. Uh, a little bit further down on the, uh, along the 105, as you all know, Raytheon and Boeing buildings are really large structures. And this isn't a comprehensive, uh, but knowing that you all live in town, I'm sure you're aware of this, but this is also for our viewing audience to at least let them know, hey, you know, these are, you know, other locations where some of these large signage could be, um, placed at if we decide to go down that route. Along PCH, uh, there's the, uh, a couple buildings on, uh, PCH at Sycamore. Uh, the one on the left, which I kind of call, call the 909 building, because it's got the big 909 addresses out there. That's over just, uh, north of Walnut. Uh, and the building on the eastern side there, that is a, the Citizens Bank Building on the right there. That's at the corner of PCH and Walnut. Again, this photo is taken. So, I mean, you could imagine if we were to allow for large signs, and depending on the type of signage, you know, the, the, how that would appear on these types of buildings. Here's another, uh, one of our buildings that we have actually been approached about, uh, is the, uh, the, uh, Boeing building right on, uh, just, just south of, uh, Chick-fil-A. And then lastly, I think, uh, this is a, uh, the PCT Towers. I mean, that's, that's, those are three very, very tall buildings. Again, try to imagine those, uh, with some type of signage on there that's out of your traditional, you know, site signage. So with that, though, um, you know, I've talked about having some different types of, uh, signage, but what types of signage would, would work? And what would they look like? So with that, I mean, you have digital reader-type boards, uh, you know, building wraps, and what do those look like? And so I've gone ahead and included a few photos in this presentation from various, uh, buildings throughout, um, Southern California and from our lovely California freeways. So, uh, this property, uh, or these two buildings are side by side. Uh, these I, I would see, uh, you know, on a, on a regular basis, driving, uh, to visit my daughter and college, going along the 10 freeway. Uh, that's, that's headed, uh, in a westbound manner, uh, over by downtown LA. Uh, what you have on the right with the red, that's more of a reader board, uh, where it's, you know, actually displaying, almost like a large television, if you will. And as you see, that's kind of wrapped along the, the top. Um, and what you see on the right there is more of your, kind of a, a canvas or building wrap. That's more a close-up, even though they're, they're now different, uh, advertising different things on there. Uh, again, that's a more close-up look. Uh, the one on the right, that's a building wrap, so you'll have that at least be more of a constant because, you know, that's not changing. But something like what you have on the left with these, uh, with these digital reader boards, you know, those are constantly changing. So you could have them advertising, in this case Spotify, for 10 seconds, and then it switches to, you know, eBay or some other, you know, advertising of, of some other, uh, business. And so that's constantly changing, and that could, uh, at times, I know, uh, just from experiences, when that went up, when that first went up, uh, driving by there in the evening and nighttime hours, that thing was really bright. And so, uh, I think, I think, I'm assuming Caltrans got involved, but, uh, um, uh, but since for the past couple months, uh, the brightness is, level has been dimmed. Uh, anyhow, this is a, this is another example of the building wrap, uh, over on the 405 at Century Boulevard. One of the city's west, uh, west side town. You know, these are, these are, these are wraps that just kind of adhere to the building. They're kind of like a skin, if you will. Uh, or they could just be hung like canvas, uh, and, you know, uh, obviously there'd be industrial strength grommets and, and, and aglets, but, or hillets, but, uh, the point is they're kind of hung on these, uh, on these buildings and still providing, as you can see in the bottom, uh, right, you can kind of still see the building through that. So it's kind of like, more of like, maybe like a mesh material. But again, another type of large, type of advertising signage. Uh, I think this is the same building, just showing a different, um, uh, uh, different, uh, advertisement. 405 at Century, there's another, uh, one along the Harbor Freeway going north on the 110 ad exposition. Uh, that building is no longer there, but this is the, uh, the type of advertisements that this had. Again, more of canvas. On the right, actually, I think that was more of a, of a, um, of a mural, but, you know, that was painted. But, uh, again, for purposes of this, it's just, uh, important just to at least show you the different types of, of signs and how some of these, uh, are, are either reader boards or digital reader boards that change, uh, or just, uh, or they'll be canvas, uh, type of, uh, of, of signs that just, you know, hang on, on the building's facade. So anyhow, um, so staff does bring this back to city council as, as a discussion item, really to determine if there's, uh, any desire to explore the possibility of allowing for billboards or large, uh, advertisement uh, displays on multi-story or, or, or high-rise type buildings, or otherwise known as, as, uh, off-site signage. Uh, and get a dialogue going and see if there's any appetite to go through that and, and, and direct staff to look at, at that, or not. Uh, but in doing so, I think, you know, there's, I've kind of teed up some questions. There's also some other questions in terms of, uh, things that we should probably discuss when contemplating this is, you know, the content in most cases, like I said earlier, we cannot govern or regulate content. So that's really important. Uh, and I'm sure our city attorney will, can have, have a few more words to say about that. But again, we can only look at sign type, sign size, location and quantity can be regulated. Content cannot. Uh, other things also, ask yourself what's being achieved by allowing for the off-site advertising in our community? Knowing, you know, knowing our community, the, the small, uh, uh, but at the, the, the small quaintness that we have here in our community, but at the same time being business-friendly, uh, you know, who benefits from this additional signage? You know, who's your target audience? And also try to understand the implications and unintended consequences that, uh, may, may result from additional large signage, such as over proliferation of signage. So with that, I kind of open the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
First, we'll establish if there's even an appetite to consider signage like this, then we can go back and direct staff because I don't think anyone would be prepared to make any decisions about all these different criteria. But, uh, we've had a couple organizations, uh, large ones in town approach us about billboards and put a lot of pressure on staff and some of the council members about really wanting those. So the question is before the council is, is this something we want to even consider? So I'll open up for discussion.
My opinion hasn't changed since 2017. I do not want to see large wrap billboards on skyscrapers in El Segundo. I think there's very little public benefit. Do we make any money on this? What's, what would it cost someone if we agree to have building wraps? What would that net the city as far as money? Anything? A permit, application fee, couple bucks?
Net, probably, it would probably be a, a zero sum.
Okay. Mr. Allen, remind me, 2017, was it the Foco de Chao monument that made you look at the sign ordinance again and try to tighten that up for us?
Uh, 2017 is when, um, Eduardo was referencing, you did an overhaul of the sign code. But in 2021, I came to the planning commission related to pylon signs, and it was Foco de Chao.
It was like they wanted like an obelisk, and you had to talk him down to something a little more fitting in with that corridor there.
Twenty feet instead of thirty-five feet.
Okay. Um, no, I think the city attorney is right to point out if we allow billboards, we have no restrictions on what's being advertised there, what that looks like. I, I, I don't think it's in the best interest of the folks who live in town, and I would not be in favor of billboards. Happy to bore you with my opinions more of it.
Thank you, Councilman Baldino. Are we certain about the net no revenue? Because I, I have a hard time believing that one.
Not unless the city owns some property like the golf course or something that it wants to allow billboards on and rent out space, but...
Because that topic has come up as well in the past.
Like, well, I mean, um, staff showed some, just the buildings, but as I was thinking, I mean, there are, there are along PCH in particular. I don't know about Imperial. There are flat pieces of property. They could, you know, put up your typical kind of billboard signs. So there's more than just those buildings there. I mean, there's, I don't know if Chevron wants to put any on their side.
As, as it relates to private property, um, you know, net zero is, is, is basically, uh, a rounding down of, you know, a couple hundred dollars on, on an annual license fee, essentially, you know, we'd be spending more staff time reviewing that than we'd collect in an annual license fee that would, similar to like a rental, you know, landlord type of business license that would be required. Otherwise, um, maybe building permits if it required some sort of structural alteration, but that would be a one-time thing, um, and it'd be based on valuation, which would be very cheap to, to do. So it's hard to guess without having this actual proposal in hand of, of what that infrastructure would look like, but it would not be a significant number.
And maybe one percent for the arts, if that's still a thing.
If we can get a sign worth more than two million.
I'm going to concur with Councilmember Baldino. I just think at this time, this is, um, once you open the door, it's hard to close that door. So I'm going to concur with Councilwoman.
For, uh, one of these sort of time, place and manner questions, is it, like conceivably, let's, let's pick a random street, right? Or a small one, like Lairport, right? That's a, that's a, that's a, a small chunk. Is the city able to say, we'll allow this kind of billboard in the, I don't know, what are the, the six and seven hundred block of Lairport only on the east side and only of this size? Or once you do that, to I think your point, the staffer, or which I was trying to glean, is someone who's on the other side of the street able to say, well, he can have one, so I can have one?
Uh, if, if we could, if you could, um, I could see potentially distinguishing between Imperial and P C H based upon different view corridors, if you will. Um, that is, I mean, perhaps you could let, let, let them go on Imperial perhaps, but not on P C H. But, I mean, if, if you're looking at a view corridor and you can see them in some direction, you're going to have a hard time keeping them off any direction that you can see. Because if, if you're going for aesthetics and you can see them and the court's going to say, well, you can already see them. So if you can see them there standing at this point, you know, so it, you have to set up these sort of view corridors, which gets very complicated. But it gets, I mean, it's going to be very difficult to defend a view corridor if you can see them.
And we have that billboard that's in the railroad right of way, right, on, on aviation. And, but they can't make an argument, I mean, obviously we don't own that piece of property, right? It's a railroad, which is a little bit of a different world, but.
They're also not subject to our, it's, it's railroad property. So they're not subject to our zoning standards.
I guess what I, what I struggle with a bit is if, if we have different parts of town with different development agreements and different, different standards, if, if we presumptively, let's, I mean, um, we have a grotesque here of, of wrapped buildings and, and giant Smirnoff Ice signs, but, you know, presumably there's a middle ground. Uh, and let's say there did, was something that we thought would made financial sense or, or was in some sort of other greater, greater accreted good to the city. Do we have the ability to regulate time, place and manner? If you, if you put one on Lairport, which you can't see from P C H, is it possible that a, whoever owns that sign could say, well, he's got one on Lairport and it's substantially the same usage as P C H, therefore I should be able to, to put up a sign?
If, if, if we could establish different, again, view corridors in P C H, you might be able to establish this different from Lairport. Now, I, you know, I have to go over there and look at where it is. And, I mean, that's right near Imperial, right?
Pardon?
That's right. Lairport, like, so I have to go over there and look at.
Lairport's where the car museum, automobile car museum.
Okay. So you're, you're, well, you're going to, you're going to be able to see it over there, I mean, from P C H, even though that's behind P C H.
Yeah, I mean, but it's hidden by, shrouded by buildings.
Yeah. I mean, if, if it's hidden from P C H and you can't see it from P C H, then yeah, potentially, but then probably no one's going to want to put that billboard there.
Yeah, no, but conceivably those guys could be the same property owner, right? One guy has the same development, right? The guy at six fifty P C H has that property all the way east of Lairport. Right? I'm, I'm trying to think of the disaster scenarios that we lay out in here. If.
Um, again, if you can protect a view corridor, which is, I think aesthetically and say, well, you can't see it from this view corridor, then potentially you could allow it someplace else. And whatever view corridors that's in is going to be exposed to allowing that.
Because I will, I will, I realize it's, it's, it's much easier to take a pessimistic view of these things. And, and, and there is a great deal of hazard. And I know, City Attorney, you, you, you peddle hazard because that's your job.
Well, I've also worked in West Hollywood and some other places where I've dealt with billboard companies and stuff.
Sure. And presumably, everything I've heard is that they're aggressive and disastrous. So all of those things. So let's say I goes to the loser on this. But I'm also saying that there's plenty of properties here that have interesting things going on inside that are reasonably dreary and, and they may want, let's say it's not an off-site advertising. Let's say a guy doesn't want the side of his building to have Smirnoff Ice on it, but he's building, you know, whatever, and he's building helicopter inside. And he wants to paint the side with his helicopter with his branding logo on it. Like, is that something that we automatically want to prohibit because it's?
Well, the, the other thing too, if we're not making any money on this, to fight those illegal battle, I mean, that's going to cost the city money. So then we become in the negative.
And we have in the past allowed Mattel to put giant pictures of Barbie on their buildings. It wasn't like an advertisement, and this was probably before you, Mr. Allen, but they were doing a promotion. And so there are permits and procedures. If someone has an event or needs a, a sign to advertise something, they can come to the city, ask for that. What we're talking about here is just allowing billboards and allowing wraps of buildings, which to me is not entirely beneficial to El Segundo. I get that we have, uh, large companies that would like to see this, but I also understand that I, I don't think it's in the best for the folks who live here for us just to constantly be giving stuff away. So I, 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 again, I don't, I don't think billboards on office buildings in El Segundo is a good idea.
Uh, again, there's, there's, um, I'm not necessarily talking about turning this into an intersection in Shibuya, but I, I, I'm saying that there are, like, let's say it's a multi-tenant building like, like we have in, in Smoky Hollow East, right? And, and those signs are all impossible to see for who's on the side because they are exactly the code, they're written in small black letters and you drive right by them. Like, could conceivably one of those companies ask the building owner, can I make, you know, the side of this like, well, One Hope Wine isn't in there anymore, so we'll use One Hope Wine. Could he have done a cool sign on the side of it that's One Hope Wine? Uh, as I understand that, they cannot currently do that, but it would seem to me to be something that would be more visually interesting than red brick with dreary black letters.
If the city wants to increase its sign areas on buildings for onsite advertising, you can, that's something that is not off-site advertising. Um, so there.
But even multi-tenant? I thought multi-tenant, they couldn't do that.
Well, I mean, it's an onsite issue use. I mean, but you have, you have restrictions too on like the amount of signage. So probably it just doesn't work. Like to have, you've got twenty tenants in a building, there's not enough sign space to allow all of those tenants to.
Usually somebody gets the murky. Like if you look at P C H, you know, somebody's paying for that signage.
You drive downtown, the top of every building is.
Right.
Yeah. But I mean, even that's kind of, I mean, downtown's kind of limited. She's like, whatever at the top and, yeah. I mean, in theory, yes, you could do something like that. It matters, it's a matter of how big and what that starts to look like.
Well, look, if there's nothing in it for the city, that's, that's fine. If it's a giant headache by putting it in, I, I understand that. If there's already a process for people to have time bounded, uh, like in that Mattel example, use Mattel, did that have to be on one of their buildings?
Yeah, like it was on their parking structure and it wasn't something that was facing P C H. It was like they were inviting people in and they had these overblown Barbies or Kens or whatever it was, and it was approved by the city because they were doing a, an event and it was a limited time. And there are processes where people can ask for things and the city can say yes. I don't think we need to open the floodgates on billboards in order to make, yeah.
Again, I'm not necessarily saying open a floodgate. I mean, there is, there, there's possibly a middle, or maybe there is no middle ground. I mean, maybe there is no middle ground to, to be had and this is all just a fool's errand. But it sounds like I'm, either way, I'm, I'm judging by the, the.
Yeah, I think we're moving on.
Yelled at the wind. All right. Very well.
Yeah. Are you good?
Uh, no interest.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thanks, Eduardo.
All right.
I just wanted to give Chris his chance to, you did a good job, but I'm still no.
Boring. Look, kids, brick.
You just want to make them all so you can see them from your house.
That's right.
So when those lights flash through your blackout windows.
The Kenny Rogers sign. Kenny. All right. Item seventeen, city cosponsored events and fee waivers. This is Mancini, busy evening.
Good evening again. Uh, as you may recall, in December twenty twenty-three, the council voted to provide one hundred percent fee waivers for several events in El Segundo hosted by community and nonprofit organizations, including Candy Cane Lane, the El Segundo Chamber of Commerce Holiday Parade, the El Segundo Little League Opening Day Parade, the Pancake Breakfast hosted by the El Segundo Firefighters Association, the Soapbox Derby hosted by the El Segundo Boy Scouts Association, and the Homecoming Parade hosted by the El Segundo Unified School District. In addition, the council voted to approve the following events for seventy-five percent fee waivers. The Movie, Movie in the Park hosted by the Rotary, the Main Street Car Show hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and El Segundo Police Officers Association, the Main Street Fair hosted by the Kiwanis, and the Run for Education hosted by the El Segundo P T A. Council also approved a process for any additional fee waiver, fee waiver requests that would be submitted throughout the year. All other applicants wishing to request a fee waiver for an event are required to submit a fee waiver request form no later than three months prior to the proposed event date. Staff then evaluate the fee waiver request form utilizing the fee waiver scorecard and then bring a recommendation to the city council for consideration at a regular council meeting. In two thousand twenty-four, the following community organizations subsequently applied for and were granted seventy-five percent fee waivers. The El Segundo Kiwanis Chili Cookoff Event, the El Segundo Fire Association's Fun Run, the Juneteenth Event. The total estimated cost of city fees waived for all events in two thousand twenty-four was one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. Staff is seeking council approval for the same fee waivers for two thousand twenty-five and/or direction on any modifications to this list. That completes my report.
I got one question, Ali.
Yes.
One piece of feedback I heard from someone that had just submitted is that when they get their number back, that there's no itemization of what's involved in that number. It's just a, it's just a lump sum.
So there should, so basically we're utilizing a permitting software called, uh, OpenGov and, um, the applicant actually completes their application online and then there is a fees tab at the end of the process where they can click and they can actually see an itemized list of.
We're sure? Because this person was pretty, okay. Well, I think there's an education. I'll put you in touch with this person because she was sure, she's done a lot of events that it was not broken down.
Yes, it's, it's broken down by department.
Okay, by department. I think that's the issue, I think, is when it says X for public safety, Y for police, there's not broken down further than that. I think there should be some transparency to what it is the assumptions are that are in that. Because there's already, already been questions that came up recently about how is it that the AYS, whatever parade, was it the parade we're looking at? Okay, police for one example, no offense, chief, that why was that number so large? Why were lieutenants and captains counted in that number?
Right. And I don't know, we'll have to look at the software. I don't know what, what, you know, what changes we can make, but I mean, certainly if anything, we can provide notes.
I just think if we're telling everyone that this is pure cost, this is a cost pass through and we're based on your criteria, willing to waive it, that we should be fully transparent on what the assumptions are or the, the breakdown on those numbers is one thing.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes.
So as someone who submits permits for the, the foundation, El Segundo Education Foundation, why is it that, um, when you submit one for private property, it's different than if it's public? So I, I, I get real frustrated, frustrated that.
I'll defer to my colleague.
Though at the Education Foundation's nonprofit, there is no waiving of any fees, even though everything's on a private property and we're not using any city facilities or city services. So it's like, I, like, we weigh fees for events, like say the Kiwanis Chili Cookoff, right? Yet the foundation is supposed to pay thousand, twelve, two thousand dollars for an event that doesn't impact any city facilities or any city, um, department. So it just seems disparity and I, I want to make sure that we fix that. And so it should all be the same. So regardless if it's on private, like the, the process of going through the system should be the same. And then, you know, you understand what I'm saying? Like I don't, I'm not, I'm, it's really frustrating because why does the foundation, when we have the gala, have to pay two thousand dollars for a permit when we're not using anything from the city?
So the, the, the simplest answer is that use of private property is like running a business. And we, we treat users of private property, whether they're running a, a special event or selling a good, as, as running a business. And so whether it's a nonprofit running a business or, or a for-profit running a business, they're subject to the same business license fees that are set by council. Now, the business license fees, depending on type of use differ. And so if we want to differentiate that for private property, we can do that. We've never really had that discussion, at least since I've been here for special events on private property. The flat rate's about five hundred some odd dollars. And then anything in addition to that is based on service needs. So if it does require uniformed officers, then there's a, there's a, an additional charge for that. If it does require the amplified sound permit, there's an additional charge for that. But otherwise, it's a flat rate, which is different than the special events that go through the Rec Park Department, which are purely based off of staffing needs essentially, because that's the only thing that, that exists.
But it doesn't, it doesn't make sense though. I mean, I get, I understand what you're trying, you're saying, but it doesn't make sense. So if I were to run, host the gala on private property, it would be cheaper. I mean, on public property, it would be cheaper than from the city's perspective than running on private property. And I'm taking up the space for, that normally the people would be using for the time that the events could taking, going on. So I just, it just, I, it, it, it's not logical. And I just, I think we need to reevaluate that.
It, it probably depends on how you define being cheaper. If it's on private property, we would look to you to provide onsite security, which is a cost that you.
Yeah, we do. We do. We always do that. We don't, we don't, we don't.
For the, the parades, that, that service is provided by the, the city. And so it's, it's different. The cost is distributed differently. So it, it'd really be hard to, we're not comparing apples to apples.
And then the other thing is when you host an event, like say the gala or the Movie in the Park or Winter Wonderland, which is next, which is on Sunday, um, when we have food vendors, we have to show proof of health, uh, permits, we have to show business license for all of our vendors.
Absolutely.
Yet when we do an event at the park, they don't have to do that.
That is required when you do special events at the park.
Is that new? Because that wasn't before.
No. So any, anybody who does business in the city, whether it's part of a city special event or a private event on private property, if they are conducting business in the city, they're required to obtain a business license and relative insurance and the.
So then can we add, um, non, like if we're adding nonprofits to fee waivers, can we add nonprofits to fee waivers on private property?
I, I would suggest that that is a different discussion during the adoption of the fee schedule. The temporary use permit is the mechanism which we use for special events or events on private property. The temporary use permit fee is adopted through the fee schedule, which is not what we're talking about tonight. So I, if that were to be a topic of discussion, I, I think it's, it's a good, good thing to explore. I just, it's just tonight, we're not, we're not talking about temporary use permits.
Let me ask a question without trying to unpack the entire item here, but is, is it reasonably appropriate to carve out the Beer Garden from the Art Walk? Because the Art Walk is in here as a hundred percent fee waiver, fee waiver as a non-fundraiser and most of it's a city event, but there's plenty of funds being raised at that Beer Garden. Uh, so I don't know that that's totally appropriate to bundle in. Should that be permitted separately?
I mean, that's something we should, we could probably talk about.
We got to staff that. I mean, we're providing staff to that and that thing is, is probably doing pretty well.
So the Art Walk is a, is a little bit of a.
Well, I'm just saying like there's a big part of the Art Walk that clearly is, is not a fundraiser. There's a, two parts on it that are definitely raising funds, uh, that probably, you know, if we were going to be logically consistent with how we're applying some of these things, should, should maybe be, I don't know, siloed away from the larger event. Um, I, I don't know if that's.
Something we can talk about.
No, I'll, I'll come off the top rope on that one because that was one of the ones I had listed here is that, you know, with the Art Walk, I'm looking all the way back on your staff report from two thousand fourteen, right?
Okay.
So it goes all the way back there and I'll get to one of those in, in an instant. But then it jumps all the way to the, in two thousand twenty-four calendar year, we approved, I, I, I'm not saying we didn't, I don't remember it.
Correct.
A one hundred percent fee waiver for the Art Walk. Not at any other time have, are they on any other list I see here. And at the same time, they were granted seventy-one thousand dollars in funds from the cultural arts. Arts Program.
That is correct.
So that is a eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand dollar benefit from the city.
That is correct.
I am questioning why they are in the same price bucket as the Holiday Parade, Pancake Breakfast, the Main Street Car Show, Soapbox Derby, and the Homecoming Parade.
I think that's a fair question for the council.
I, I, I have, I have a definite issue with that one. It's like, you, you're pulling from both buckets. Whoever's doing the selling is doing a fantastic job, but we're not doing a very good job at looking at, looking at it holistically. That's eighty-five grand for a place, for something that's obviously making some kind of money somewhere. It's a great event, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm saying that it doesn't belong in that hundred percent bucket, there's no way.
From, from the organizers' information that they give us, which is all we take, is they're not making a profit on this event?
Uh, sure. But eighty-five thousand dollars from us?
Correct.
That, that's pretty good. Okay, so then the other thing I want to pull up is, and I'm not sure if this is wrong, but in Run, uh, in Run for Education in two thousand and fourteen, it says it's only a twenty-five percent fee waiver. Is that a typo? Because everything else in that bucket, Movie in the Park, Arbor Day, da-da-da, it was all seventy-five percent.
In fairness, is that before we went to fully burdened rates, too, though?
Yes, that was, yes.
Twenty-five, okay, so then, and then it got jumped into the, uh, seventy-five percent bucket.
Correct.
So I guess my confusion is, someone came in, in public comments saying that their rates had tripled.
Correct.
Yes. Um, we're waiving almost thirty thousand dollars in fees.
Right, so historically, and all, all we can speak to now is, is, is what we've all been involved in presently. So we've had this discussion historically. I, I don't have a lot of history on what each department charged, because we didn't use a system like we're using now that captured all that information. It was essentially, hey, Chief Bermudas, what, what do, what do they need to pay for you? Hey, Michael Allen, what do they need to pay for you? Now we're using this system where you actually have to go in and put in those numbers, and it's all transparent, everybody can see what those are.
Okay, so conceivably, the rates have changed because we're using a system that actually is accounting for everything at this point in time.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, that makes a little more sense now.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And, and actually, uh, last, what I heard was double, they went up to, you know, double. They were paying five thousand, they're paying ten thousand now. So if it's forty thousand and seventy-five percent fee reduction, that would be ten thousand.
That could be.
They were paying five before, and so double. So my question was going to be, I know we adjusted some of our fees last year, but did they, did they double?
Are you talking specific?
Because they're seventy-five, yeah, I mean, overall, our fees did not double, right? Because their concern specifically was, we were paying five, now we're paying ten. The seventy-five percent reduction that we get is the same, that's a constant, but we still doubled our absolute dollars.
Mo, most of the fees, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Ally, but most of the fees are driven by the actual staff time. So those, and, and maybe resource requests, like the barricades and things like that.
But I, I can't imagine that changed fundamentally. They've been doing that event for, I don't know, twenty years, longer than that.
I think to the point that was just made, it's more about the, the, the better accountability that there is in recording it. The only fee adjustments that were made were the inflation, you know, the, the incremental inflation every year that the fee schedule goes up.
I guess the reason I'm bringing it up is it's not only if that's true, if the methodology is different, then everyone is going to have their fees doubled. That's what I'm hearing you say. It's not just this one group. Unless something materially changed in terms of the number of resources they're using for that event, there, every other group's gonna have the same problem. So, I think we are, it would be nice to have a, what was it last year, what is it this year? What are the dollars we're talking about here? Because we should be anticipating, and we're gonna have other concerns here, probably.
I think we'll be in a better position to provide that now, year to year. Um, this is the first year we've been using this software, so it's the first year that we've really been able to look at actual costs, and every department has to go in.
Can I suggest maybe that we preempt this, and we actually go to the people that we know they're gonna pull these requests and give them the number in advance, based on what you presented historically? Here's what your number is gonna be, so they don't freak out when their numbers double thirty days beforehand?
Yeah, anecdotally, Sean, who manages the program with, with Ally Shop, has worked on moving those fees, at least the projected fees, upfront when they apply, or earlier on in the process, so they see it upfront. Um, the other thing that Sean mentioned to me was that, now that we've gone through a year of this program, he's had most of these conversations with a lot of the, the usual suspects that, that obtained permits. So there's definitely room for improvement. For example, the, the breakdown of hours and, and staffing structure, you know, that's required, that informs that fee would definitely be a helpful addition, and we can, we can do that.
Okay.
Right, yeah, it's been a year, it's been a cycle, so all the usual folks have been through this now.
Okay, colleagues, anything further?
Um, I spent time with Ally and Michael and the city manager going through OpenGov, just trying to figure out, what's the permit look like, where are these costs coming from? Um, and, and it, it does appear, because we have this new internal tracking member uh, software, we're just doing a better job of collecting fees.
Yes.
Before, you would get a permit, they'd give you, here's your estimate, and you'd be, okay, and then we'll true up later, and then the, the city just never true up later.
Correct, that is correct.
Like, we would, we would say, you're gonna get a reduction, but then we'd never actually collect the fees. So there's some reality shock of us saying we want to recoup our costs. There's reality shock of us saying we're gonna, you know, run things like a business and find out where the money's going. And so there's gonna be that sticker price, when now we actually start applying the policies that we said we wanted to do, as opposed to before, when we didn't have all the software and things really weren't working down, the department's just kind of absorb it.
Yes.
You know, they say, we are gonna have extra police, we are gonna have our guys out there, and then the end of the day, in the budget, they would find those overtime dollars somewhere else, and it wouldn't be so, so explicit, as you would say.
That's accurate, yes.
That's kind of how it's explained to me.
Yeah, I love that we're doing this, we're tracking, we're getting what's owed to us, we just want it to be, if you're dressing it upfront, great.
Sure.
I don't want surprises, sugar shock.
Yes, we're giving them best estimates upfront, especially if they've done the year, the event the year prior.
And are there any suggestions to change what's been presented by staffers, or does someone like to make?
I, I'm okay approving what you have here. Um, I, I do have a question for chief, and that is, one of the biggest costs has been um, the police staffing. And so I'm curious if, and I get where if we're having, like, our, our big Little League Parade, we knew we're bringing in a lot of people, we're gonna, we're gonna have a lot of officers working overtime. But then you think of like, the Little League, um, I'm, I'm talking about the World Series Parade, right? Like, that was a big deal. But our, our annual Little League Parade is, you know, it's cute. There's not a lot of people coming from out of town. So I, I guess, I'm curious, when you're, when you're going in, you're saying, we need a sergeant and cadets, or whatever, are those employees who are already scheduled that day, or we have to bring them on?
We have to bring them on.
Okay.
Because when you're talking about like, a Sunday, for instance, I'm looking at the Christmas Parade that's coming on Sunday.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a sixteen-page operational plan that I review to make sure that it's safe. That includes a traffic plan, that includes stuff that happens before the parade is even open, making sure that the, the roadway is clear, uh, that if you have to basically tow any cars that shouldn't be there, get towed, and then there's intersections for the Holiday Parade, there's eighteen intersections that have to be basically covered and filled. And what we've done over the last year, and Lieutenant McEnroe, who sits in the Event, Event Planning Committee, uh, he's there at every meeting, he has cut down probably thirty to forty percent of the cost that police have been responsible for, by eliminating the amount of officers that are there, by allowing our cadets to do it, and our PSOs, which are another, that come at a fraction of the cost. Uh, we've probably eliminated about as much as I'm comfortable with, any more reduction would make it unsafe.
Well, I leave it to your discretion.
Yeah, and we cannot expect our patrol personnel to do that, because we have to police the city. So if we have an event and have nobody, uh, staffing the event per se, if a call comes in for service, we need somebody to handle that call.
Sure.
So that's why the planning happens a couple of months in advance, where we have an idea as to what the cost and we're gonna be, and what personnel we need to have on hand to make sure that event goes safe. Uh, I think we've cut about as much as possible, because if something goes wrong, the first thing they're gonna do is come screaming and yelling at me at who approved this operational plan and why did this happen? Uh, so we're at a level where I think I'm, I'm comfortable where we're at now. Uh, I think Lieutenant McEnroe is dissecting every event that comes through very thoroughly, and ensuring that it's effective, that it's safe, and that we're a really good position where we think we can do it, that it's the right way.
Great, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I, I would only ask if it's, this is, this is probably for the staff, if, if, is it practical? Is it practical to have a permit within a permit, to have, if we're gonna do the Art Walk, to have the Art Walk be a hundred percent fee waiver, but the Beer Garden be a, a separate permitted activity? Because that, to me, is, is just not consistent with a non-fundraising element.
I'm not exactly sure what the question is.
Well, so, so I'm saying, so, so they come forward, they come forward with the Art Walk LLC, five oh one C three, comes forward and says, hey, I want to do this, I'm doing the Art Walk, I want a hundred percent fee waiver, and you say, okay, it's a hundred percent fee waiver for all of the Art Walk, except when you use the fireman's parking lot to sell beer for fifteen bucks a can, or whatever it is, like, that part is clearly a fundraiser, it's more consistent with a seventy-five percent fee waiver, and you've got to pay for the officers we have sitting out front, making sure the guys are checking people's IDs.
Yeah, I think, um, the system really can be configured however we want, so it really comes to, when staff asks the question, or the vendor asks the question for the fee waiver, is, is receiving that direction from council, like, hey, we want a hundred percent for anything else except XYZ. Then when staff go in the system to input their staffing time and costs, et cetera, it is dedicated to just the XYZ that was carved out, that the fee waiver does not apply to. Uh, so yeah, I mean, we, we can do it, it's just a matter of sorting that logistic out ahead of time, so that we know what we're doing when we-
Because, yeah, then they can, they can plan for that, you know, and make their fifteen-dollar cans of beer, sixteen-dollar cans of beer, whatever cost to pay for the permit. Because I think it's just intellectually dishonest to look at AYSO and say, your parade is, is not, it's not a nonprofit, but that is, that is obviously a fundraiser. Um, so I would, that would be my only, the only modification I would make to this.
Yeah, and again, we would bring each of those events to you each time, so we could have that discussion, if we come forward with a fee waiver.
Okay, anything else? Someone like to move approval?
So moved.
All right, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Five zero, thank you, Mrs. Mancini. All right, we're on to twenty-one, I believe, right? We jumped around a lot. Oh, sorry, yeah, eighteen, thank you. Plunge Public Art Budget Approval, you're not done yet. Jeez.
Sorry about that, council. Okay, yes, let me pull that out. Okay. Good evening again. Tonight, staff is seeking council approval to earmark one hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the Cultural Development Fund for a public art piece to be installed at the renovated Urosari Swim Stadium upon its opening in late two thousand and twenty-five. The CDP Fund has funded several community murals since its inception in two thousand and nineteen. However, no public art pieces have been directly commissioned through the fund. Staff have identified several opportunities to incorporate public art into capital improvement projects that are scheduled within the next few years, including the public art at the Plunge, and also within the teen plaza or teen center renovation projects. The proposed art for the plunge would utilize one of the seven hundred and eighty-eight square foot walls that spans the length of the main pool inside the facility. Considering the environmental factors such as moisture, humidity, cleaning chemicals, and high public interaction, staff, in collaboration with the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, has recommended mosaic tile installation for the site. To ensure a high-quality impactful art piece for the scale of this site, a project budget of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is being proposed. The budget will support a competitive RFQ process to solicit qualified artists. Three artists will be selected and to develop design concepts, and the Art and Culture Commission will assist in the selection of the winning design. And that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
So I just, will the council not be deciding on the final design?
So the way that the CDP guidelines read, and the city attorney can weigh in, or Joaquin can weigh in as well, the other city, Assistant City Attorney, um, the, the language explicitly states that the council does not decide individual art projects.
Well, I think this is gonna be a big enough piece of art that's gonna be there for many, many years, that the council should weigh in on that.
So that would just be up to the interpretation of the city attorney's office?
If the council wants to weigh in on something, it can weigh in on something that, when it comes to expenditure of money, so.
Attaboy, Mark.
Thank you. I just think it's, that it would be, it would be appropriate that it would come to this body to have final approval.
I, I think, just at the very minimum, just to see what it's gonna look like.
Sure.
I don't, I don't, I don't see anything, so I don't, I know it's probably in the staff report, or has it not been designed yet?
No, it's not, we're, tonight, we're just approving the budget.
Okay, I, I think, I think obviously, we, we want to see what it's gonna look like, but I, I got you.
Yep.
And the recommendations are gonna come from ACC and-
Correct.
Cultural Development Coordinator, nothing.
Right, the RFQ, and you'll see all of those things as well.
We'll all see it through the process.
Okay. Anything further?
I have just a question logistically, so you're gonna select three, and then they, they draw up little mock boards?
So there, there's gonna be a, a larger list, and then from that larger list of applicants, however many we get, we'll take the top three, and they'll get a seven hundred and fifty dollar, I think it is.
Okay, that was my question, we pay them to make a little thing, and then we pick from there.
Right, we pay them to do a mock-up, so they can actually give us some real ideas of what's gonna, what's gonna go in there. And we give them initially, right, some guidelines and ideas, things of that nature.
Okay. What's before us is to approve the hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars from the Cultural Development Fund to be allocated towards the public art in the plunge, and someone like to move approval?
So moved.
Right, who's second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then, um, on the guidelines, do you not want the body to just make sure you're okay with the guidelines that are established? So that you don't, so on the approval process?
Yeah, so we're gonna be bringing back a report on the one percent for the arts in January, so we can include a review of the guidelines at that time, if the council would like to weigh in on them.
I think that would be appropriate.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to item twenty-one. Appointments to the Environmental Committee Capital Improvement Program Advisory Committee and Library Board of Trustees. And, yeah, I do, let's see there.
The anticipation.
The password is ritolo, ritolo. Uh, hold on, it's right here. Okay, here we go. Environmental Committee, for a full term to expire October thirty-first, thirty-first two thousand and twenty-seven is Kevin Butler. For the Environmental Committee, full term to expire same period, October thirty-first two thousand and twenty-seven is Leslie Edwards. Also for the Environmental Committee expiring October thirty-first two thousand and twenty-six is Sudip Giri. For Capital Improvement Program Advisory Committee, full term to expire October thirty-first two thousand and twenty-seven, Mike Rittolo. Uh, many years of service, thank you, Mike. For the Capital Improvement Program Advisory Committee, full term to expire October thirty-first two thousand and twenty-seven is Jennifer Hyatt. And then for the Library Board of Trustees, full term to expire June thirtieth two thousand and twenty-seven is Eric Hoffman. Thank you, we had some great interviews, and we had some more to date as well, more announcements coming either next meeting or the meeting after, for Arts and Culture, Diversity Equity and Inclusion. All right, item twenty-two is to open the recruitment process for the positions on the committee, commissions and boards that will expire in two thousand and twenty-five, with the direction of staff to open their process for the positions, and, yeah, same thing. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Pimentel, second. Great, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right. That concludes our regular business. City clerk, any reports this evening?
No, not unless you guys have questions about the election. It's important to see if I approved it today and I should receive final numbers, I would say by Friday.
All right. Great. Thank you. City treasurer's not here. Councilor Baldino?
Uh, just a belated happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Looking forward to the tree lighting this week and the parade this weekend. Always a great time of year in El Segundo. So looking forward to seeing you guys a bunch.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilor Drew?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Councilor Prustock?
Yeah. I just wanna, um, give a shout out to Chris Sherrill. She was also very instrumental in the, um, development of the Christmas dinner many, many years ago. Um, and that's Tracy Weaver's mother, who's, um, was also, Chris Sherrill was also a school board member for many years. And I just wanna thank, pre-thank the Parks and Rec Department for all their work that they're, they're, they're gonna be doing with the tree lighting and then the chamber for the parade. And a huge thank you to all the residents who live on the northeast corner of Candy Cane, of the town. Um, and I appreciate that we're doing the shuttle this year and hopefully, um, do we order extra trash cans around from Edco? And thank you to Edco for supplying those trash cans. Um, I, hopefully will be a lovely holiday season to celebrate the lights in our town and thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Prostom, Pimentel. So much exciting stuff, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Transportation Committee meets on Monday. We'll be talking through the matching fund process for large, uh, transportation projects and also get a briefing from, uh, Metro and Caltrans about, uh, how they view fund allocations for auxiliary lanes. And what that means is, you know, when you're coming on a four oh five north and you have that unbelievably brief period where someone can merge off Rose Grants, getting on the four oh five, uh, for years, those expansions of that ramp have been mooted, uh, and not engaged because it's, it's viewed, we view that as a safety auxiliary lane. Uh, some at Caltrans view that as widening a freeway, which is very bad. Uh, so we have to have a big discussion about that, which will probably result in a bike lane somewhere in Simi Valley. Uh, but we eventually will get our four oh five auxiliary lane. Also is an adjunct to that at the COG, there was a big discussion about the South Bay Fiber Ring. Uh, there, there's a presentation that circulated, it's incredibly, uh, challenging presentation as far as how it was, uh, read. So I'm going to try and translate that before we vote on it in January, but it will involve the COG likely transferring ownership or operation of the fiber ring and an, an attempt to build more competition for internet service providers, not so much for El Segundo. We have reasonably good coverage relative to some of the South Bay cities. Some of them still have a, a, one franchise agreement and have remarkably poorly served parts of their town. Uh, but it is a significant, uh, a significant undertaking by the COG because that fiber ring, as you guys will remember, is based on, uh, transit money. So Metro views that as a way to keep cars off the road by letting more people work from home. So building that middle market and then la, or middle mile and last mile distribution of fiber is going to be a big topic for the COG. South Bay Aerospace, Matt over at Weisberg, Dr. Brand attended, which was nice to see him. Uh, we did not cover much real estate there. I did go on a tour of the new sanitation tunnels. I know. I took lots of pictures for you guys. But if, if you go on the county side, if you go down the one-ten from Carson, those tunnels are immense. I mean, you're talking about a fifteen, sixteen-foot diameter tunnel that runs all the way from the one-ten at Carson, all the way down to Pedro. Uh, some places you're four hundred and fifty feet underground. They're pulling about a million gallons of water an hour out of there of groundwater that's coming through already. Uh, it is a really impressive undertaking and probably should be done, they should have both ends of the tunnel linked up by, I think, two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, and that, those, that tunnel will replace two hundred-year-old tunnels that are one bad earthquake away from, from totally ruining, uh, four million people's sanitation efforts. So, uh, it's a really cool project. It's neat to see a project actually work, uh, and actually get built. It's kind of like the opposite of the trains. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, do you wanna talk about sidebar tomorrow? Oh, whoa, whoa. Uh, we have, uh, our, our big innovation summit. Uh, this is the first anniversary. We had one last year where the state treasurer came down. This time we'll have a panel that will have the general counsel and owner of the Kings, Chris Kelly will be there, uh, Mark Waxman from Ten to One Ventures, who's a, a, a three-time, uh, exeter to Microsoft. Um, we will be, the mayor will be, uh, moderating it and I think, do we know who else is presenting? Oh, Cameron Schiller from Range View, which is a, a, a meteoric rise additive and robotic manufacturing, El Segundo Genesis Company. So it's gonna be a big deal. It's gonna be right over here at the Roots. Um, and I think we have seventy odd RSVPs, but it's a, it'll be really, really, really well attended. Uh, and if it's anywhere near as successful as last year's, it'll, it'll, it'll be a, a, a big valedictory moment for all of the innovation we have going in town. I think we'll have a, a ton of, of venture in there. Oh, and I forgot to mention, I went to the South Bay Aerospace, not South Bay Aerospace Alliance, the, the, uh, Alliance for Innovation, uh, where we presented alongside Long Beach, Glendale and Ontario about some of the different ways we do development and the way that marine-focused innovation in Pedro. I mean, if you wanna talk about a moment to make us look like the world's greatest, most business-friendly city, imagine trying to redevelop a wharf, an unused wharf in Pedro to have people grow kelp on. I mean, it's taken them four years. Four years. I mean, just to grow seaweed. It's really, I sat there and just looked around like, my God, we're, we're like an Ayn Rand paradise all of a sudden. But, uh, anyhow, Mr. Mayor, that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, sir. I just wanna say thank you to Ally Mancini, not only for efforts tonight, but also, uh, contending with a lot with the drama community and, uh, accommodating them to, and being very reasonable. Thank you for that. Uh, also with the teen plaza, getting that across the finish line. Thank you, Elias and team. We had a couple businesses recently that had some concerns and he's pulled out some stops for them and been very responsive. Thank you to Michael Allen for helping Varda get that last permit done, which was propulsion testing or the second one, whatever it was. Some crazy thing that most cities can't even get done and we got it done fast for them because every day counts. And thank you to Barbara and Christine. They've been working tirelessly on the economic development front and we don't really appreciate them as much because it's all mostly behind the scenes, but they're doing some great stuff that's helping the city out.
Mr. Mayor, on that, I wanted to add that, speaking of the Varda piece, I mean, that's a quarter billion dollars worth of government contracts handed out to, to be developed within El Segundo in the last week.
Yeah. Thank you. Meteoric rise there too. Um, and as a reminder, Will Bre, founder and CEO, when we asked him, why'd you pick El Segundo? He says, because it had the highest density of engineers and highly trained intellectuals in all of Southern California per square mile, more so even than Silicon Valley. So that's why he's here. I'm gonna keep him here, obviously. So thank you, Michael, for getting that done. Uh, city attorney?
Love this evening. Thank you.
Okay. City manager?
Yes. Just one item, ma'am, since we're talking about all the great things that are going on, uh, tomorrow, the South Bay COG is hosting an awards, uh, ceremony recognizing, uh, El Segundo as one of the, uh, South Bay Energy and Climate Recognition Program awardees. So I know a number of us are going to the lunch tomorrow in Carson, uh, but we'll be recognized as kind of being the, one of the most energy efficient cities in the South Bay. So we'll be recognized tomorrow. We'll, we're supposed to get something, we'll bring it back in a nice little plaque or something.
There's a, a tour of, that the COG is taking on for fault lines too on Friday. If anyone wants to go see the, how utilities will collapse at different fault lines, it's really cheery.
Okay. That's it.
That's it. Okay. So we are adjourned. Thank you.